Begin in ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning. The school board meeting for July 21st, 2015 is now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mrs. Henderson?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
Before we go any further, it is with great, great pleasure that I get to welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Desmond Blackburn. Dr. Blackburn, welcome. And I can say, I am so happy to have you back here in our district. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, first of all, thank you, Mrs. Neese, Board and the community. It's an absolute pleasure for me to be here right now. And the hospitality that I've been shown by the Brevard community is just unimaginable. So, thank you so much, and I can't wait. And I look very much, very much look forward to the partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Irwin, Director of Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Irwin.
I will say, I think that with some of the new renovations, it looks like our flag didn't make it back in here. So, we're going to face our flag out in the parking lot as we do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. We had a photo opportunity now that we have a new superintendent. We had some rearranging. I'd also like to point out, and those of you that come to our meetings regularly, it may look like we have new chairs in the audience today. And they are not new. They are, in fact, five years old. I don't want the rumor going out there that the Board has been frivolously spending tax dollars buying new chairs. These are, in fact, five-year-old chairs. We did some rearranging. The chairs that were in here were literally starting to come apart. And we pictured a meeting where someone sat down and the chair literally came apart at the seams. So, these came from a training room in the back. And I want to thank staff that made arrangements to have these newer chairs brought out for the meeting today. So, thank you. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn? Oops. There you go.
Mrs. Neese and members of the Board, on today's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, one presentation, 24 consent items, and two information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public.
Do I have a motion to adopt the July 21st, 2015 School Board meeting agenda and its revisions?
A motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Blackburn, let's move on to the administrative staff recommendations.
Mrs. Neese and members of the Board, under item A5, you have seen administrative staff recommendations to consider. You have seven administrative staff recommendations to consider.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? You don't want to make any of the seven sweat? Okay, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Blackburn, are there any recognition items this morning?
Item B5 is a check presentation and recognition of Top Dog Express Car Wash and Oil Change. This morning, we have with us Matthew Freeman, Managing Partner, along with Mary Mibers from Top Dog Express to present a check to Janice Kershaw, Executive Director of Brevard Schools Foundation, who is joined by Amy Harris, Program Manager of the Take Stock in Children program, and Deborah Foley, Marketing and Outreach Supervisor in the Department of Community Relations.
Good morning and welcome, Dr. Blackburn. Dr. Blackburn and Board members, I'm pleased to introduce Top Dog Express, a Melbourne company that has been supporting the schools since it opened in 2009. Matt Freeman, the Managing Partner, has also brought some guests with him today, Carolyn and Frank Ibbotson, and their family friend Anna Guzman, who are in the audience. Welcome. Matt Freeman has been giving back to local schools, sports leagues, and charities, most recently through a program where, for every full-service lava car wash that was sold, $1 was donated to Brevard Schools Foundation. If your car gets as dirty as mine, you know these funds can really add up. Brevard Schools Foundation is pleased to work with businesses like Top Dog Express to help direct charitable gifts to the donors' area of interest. We are grateful that Top Dog selected our Take Stock in Children program as the program that they wanted to support so they could give more students the opportunity of receiving scholarships, mentors, and hope. Best of all, Take Stock is one of our programs where gifts are matched dollar-for-dollar by the state. So, just to tell you briefly a little bit more about Take Stock in Children, I would like to introduce Program Manager Amy Harris.
Good morning. Thank you, Matt, Mary, and Top Dog Express. I just want to let you know that I love my monthly pass. Thank you, Deborah, for introducing Top Dog to Take Stock. We appreciate the many advocates who share our passion for the program. Take Stock in Children is a dropout prevention, scholarship, and mentoring program that serves aspiring low-income students who desire to go to college. These students face many risk factors. Upon acceptance into the program, the student is matched with a caring mentor and a college success coach. They attend college readiness workshops and are held accountable for meeting strict program requirements. Upon successful graduation from a Brevard Public High School, they receive a two-year Florida Prepaid Scholarship. With the help of supporters like Top Dog Express, we are able to serve these deserving students and break the cycle of poverty through scholarships, mentors, and hope. Again, thank you, Matt, Mary, and Top Dog Express.
Thank you, Amy. I'd like to now invite Matt and Mary to present their check and say a few words.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me here today to recognize the contribution from our company. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the three ladies that made this happen, Ms. Janice Kershaw, Mary Mibers, and also Deborah Foley. Without them, excuse me, without them, our company wouldn't have been able to begin this whole process. Thank you again, and I just wanted to say I'm really proud to be a part of this. Thank you. Sorry. Today, we're presenting a check for $5,221 to the Brevard Schools Foundation.
Dr. Blackburn and Ms. Neese, would you like to join us for a picture, please? On behalf of Brevard Schools Foundation, I extend our appreciation to Top Dog Express for supporting this important program and would like to give you this token of appreciation, a certificate, as just our way of saying thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Blackburn, we're now at the presentation portion of the agenda.
Yes, Mrs. Neese. It is my understanding that this morning, Dr. Deborah Pace, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources, will be making the introductions. Dr. Pace?
Good morning, members of the Board, Dr. Blackburn, and the community. I appreciate this opportunity to bring forward some additional information about EDR. As you know, at our last board meeting, there were several concerns expressed and communicated. And Mrs. Neese asked me and worked with staff to engage for an external review, to see where we are, where we've been, and where we need to go in order to restore public trust, assure transparency, and protect the interests of the school district. So, where have we been? This slide represents some of the different stages of our partnership with the company CrossPoint EDR. As you know, we've been in partnership with them since 2002 in order to implement, develop, modify human resources and financial management systems. As a result of that, we've looked at both system functionality and internal processes to make sure that we're able to process information strategically for effective control of our important resources. The following chart represents where we are with the EDR CrossPoint software purchase from 2013. The Human Resources Payroll Module has been introduced as new code to district staff. An initial cycle of testing was completed. There were some functionality issues, and that is now back in development with the organization and the company. The Employee Portal is a function of the system that we will not fully utilize. We currently use our mix system for employee information and plan to continue to do that for the period of time. However, the code has been introduced, it's been tested, and we have successfully completed three cycles with the e-contracts portion for PSC teachers and AC teachers. We have a four-cycle for our annual contract reappointments in the fall, scheduled at this time. The financial module for the system has been fully installed as new code. We had an update as of July the 11th. With that, there have been still 38 open issues. However, none of those are Level 1 or showstopper issues. The system is currently in use by some of the district users and is still working through a cycle to work out the remaining bugs before we roll it out to the schools. A part of that rollout to school is complicated by scheduling of staff, the opening of school, and making sure that that works, not just for the system, but for the district in terms of keeping the workflow going. The Vendor Portal and the Supply Chain Portal are still in development, and we have not yet received any of those particular portions of the code. However, the Enterprise Information Portal has been fully received. Training was provided to district-level staff, and there are some uses that have been put into place. But I have to tell you, we kind of put this on the back burner in order to get the other modules up fully operational. And additional training is needed and has been agreed to as we move forward. The Workflow Engine and Project Tasks, again, is still in development. The Student Registration Module is actually in addition to the agreement. That was a part of the partnership effort. It was something that CrossPoint EDR wanted to add to their repertoire, worked with district staff to kind of design a system. Again, that was kind of put, however, on the back burner in order to get the Finance Module going and up in operational. In order to talk about where we go from here, I'd like to invite some of our external partners, who were a part of the external review, to present their information to the Board. Here today, from Weiderman Malik, the legal firm that was asked to review the contract and the payment schedule, we have Aaron Thalwitz and Ed Kenberg from their legal team.
Thank you, Deborah. Good morning, Board. My name's Aaron Thalwitz. This is my partner, Ed Kenberg. We're attorneys at Weiderman Malik. And we were asked to review the CrossPoint EDR contract as well as the subsequent amendments and perform a preliminary investigation into the payments that were made and, to some degree, the software that had been delivered or not delivered. We put two sections of the, if you look at the presentation, there are two sections of the total contract. The first is from the original contract. And what it says is actually kind of important. That refers to, that first quote, number one, is a section from the 2013 amendment to the original contract. And it's important because it incorporates that amendment into the original license agreement. And among many reasons why that's important is the second paragraph, which provides that, to read it, it says, "Promptly after receipt of the down payment of the product order price, CrossPoint will deliver to the client one copy of the software." And that wasn't modified in the 2013 amendment. So, a plain reading of that indicates that, upon receipt of the down payment, which was made, and properly made, in our opinion, they should have delivered the software. It appears that did not happen. Promptly isn't really further defined, but I think, under any reasonable interpretation, we're here about two years later, and it hasn't been completely delivered. And I think that the most reasonable reading of that is probably within 30 to 45 days. And by then, it's our understanding that virtually none of the software, if any, had been delivered. Next slide. So, we went through each of the payments that the district had made since the 2013 amendment and gave an opinion about each of them. The first one, the $600,000 down payment, in our opinion, was proper. That was required on execution, and it was delivered. There was no deliverable for CrossPoint EDR at that point, so that was a proper payment. The next payment, the $2,350,000 software payment on July 30th, and then the subsequent $600,000, $700,000 payments later in 2014, in our opinion, were improper. And the reason for that is simply because the software had not been delivered. When we received invoices from CrossPoint EDR, there should have been a procedure whereby staff determined whether the software had been delivered before initiating those payments, or at least determined the degree that the software had been delivered. Again, it's our understanding that the software had not been delivered or had largely not been delivered. Therefore, the payment shouldn't have been made. Paragraph four on this slide refers to the $200,000 maintenance payments for the new software made in July of 2013 and 14. And again, because the software had either been not delivered or largely not delivered, there was nothing to maintain or very little to maintain. And it's our opinion that those payments were improper or largely improper. Paragraph five refers to the $360,000 maintenance payments made for the green screen software in 2013 and 14. We had the green screen software. They performed the maintenance. Therefore, those payments were properly made. The $280,000 partial maintenance payment, which was made in advance, was really, in our opinion, improper for two reasons. One, the advance itself was improper because it should have been cleared by the Board, if made at all. The other reason is similar to the other maintenance payments for the new software. Again, the software had largely not been delivered. Therefore, the maintenance on it could not have been done, and the payment should not have been made. Now, paragraph seven provides that any future payments going forward from this time into years three, four, and five would be improper unless the software is delivered. Those payments would only be improper to the extent that the new software isn't delivered. If it's delivered, those payments would be more proper to that degree. We formed a few recommendations based on a review of the contract and what had transpired since 2013. And these are our four recommendations. And the first, the 2013 amendment to the contract should have been clearer. And so, our first recommendation is that the district should establish a policy going forward requiring Brevard Public Schools to develop a scope of work, clearly identifying each item being purchased, the amount for the item, and the date of delivery for each item. This is basically benchmarking. This is not anything unusual. And that should be developed prior to entering into negotiations on service and supply contracts. The next policy, which may have avoided some of this, had it been in place, is to require legal review and approval for all contracts over a certain value. And that value would be determined by the Board. The third is to establish a policy requiring invoices and proper delivery of supplies or services to be verified prior to issuing payments. Again, if that policy had been in place and followed, it's less likely that the improper payments would have been made. Or at least, if they had been made, the Board would have been fully aware of that. The fourth recommendation is to establish a policy separating the purchasing and payment activities. It's our opinion that the office which procures products or services or the officer should not be the same person or persons who actually approve and make those payments. And that's really a conflict of interest policy. Next slide. So, that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Okay. I'm sure there are, so yeah, don't go anywhere. Karen?
Thank you. Excuse me. I agree with your recommendations. I think that they're pretty solid. They should have been in place. And when this first came about, we asked some of those questions. You know, where's the plan? Where's the deadlines? Oh, we'll get, you know, it'll be there, blah, blah. And so, I completely agree with that. I do have a question on how you determine that it wasn't delivered because it's my understanding that at least some of it, in some aspect, had been delivered, that when we tested it, it wasn't functional. In addition, BPS has asked for numerous changes to what the software does, adding functionality, changing requirements, which then, in turn, changes deadlines, which, again, because we didn't have the implementation plan thoroughly defined, it wasn't presented back to the Board for those kinds of deadlines. So, I'm kind of curious as to, did you include any of that into the "not promptly"?
Primarily, we looked at the contract itself. The contract provides that the software is to be delivered promptly upon receipt of the down payment. The down payment was made. The software was not delivered. The 2013 amendment, although it's certainly not clear, it does have certain dates in it and timeframes for certain things, 35 days, 40 days for certain things. In our opinion, that implies that that was the timeframe, or at least could have been the timeframe, for the software to be delivered from the perspective of CrossPoint EDR and from the school district. Our opinion, as far as what had been delivered, is based on limited information. We didn't do an in-depth investigation, nor were we asked to. So, to the extent that the software had been delivered, it's our opinion that whatever payments were made were proper. We're making certain assumptions about that, and that's clear, I think, in our report.
If I could add just a little bit to that, too. It's not unusual in the software industry for projects to kind of go sideways and not meet their dates and times. But when that started going sideways, the staff should have brought that to the Board and amended the contract so that the Board had knowledge of what was going on. So, the contract is very clear as to what it says. If the contract wasn't what was intended, which is not unusual in the contract world or the software world, that information should have been brought to the School Board. And then, the School Board could have amended the contract, could have amended the payment schedule, or done whatever it deemed proper in its discretion.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. John? Oh, I meant Andy was next.
Go ahead, Andy.
Okay. So, John, then Andy, and then Mrs.? Okay.
I just wanted to expound, I think you hit the nail on the head with the scope of work criteria. That is obviously, especially in technology, very important to have a scope of work. I also think that we need to have requirements, obviously, built in. You can't even build a scope of work unless you have the actual requirements defined before you get there. So, I think that's important. In your investigation, did you have any opportunity or reason to look at licensing? Specifically, the licensing of the code that existed from the 2002 contract and how that affects what this amendment did?
No. We weren't asked to look into the licensing. When we look at the contract that you have with Harris, excuse me, the contract that Harris has with EDR to purchase it, in the contract, they buy all the licensing. And if there's a licensing dispute or a violation of some licensing policy, then Harris is responsible for taking care of that, so it shouldn't be our issue. But licensing is a concern because this company's changed names five or six times, much of which wasn't brought to the School Board's attention. When they were, when the original CrossPoint Inc. was judicially liquidated in 2006, I couldn't find any record that the School Board knew that they had been judicially liquidated and their assets purchased by CrossPoint LLC, which was under the control of the husband of the founder of CrossPoint Inc. And we can't find any records to indicate that. So, that is something that the Board may need to want to follow up on, but I don't think it's critical, given the contract between Harris and the School Board, that Harris is responsible for ensuring licenses are proper.
Okay, thanks. And one last question. There's been a lot of talk about source code. Nowhere in the product order form does it mention anything about source code related to this specific environment. Did you find anything that links source code and the actual delivery of a base code to the district legally?
In the original contract, in the master agreement, there is a provision which provides that the source code to the green screen software would be held in escrow, which is typical for contracts like this. And it's our understanding that the district does own and use the source code for the green screen software. To our knowledge, I don't, I can't say with certainty whether this is true. I don't know whether we have the source code for the new software to the extent it's been developed.
It's a discussion. We have three items that Dr. Pace and I talked about with Harris yesterday that will be part of the ongoing discussions after today's meeting. You know, we talked about how we're going to get around the table again. That's one of the items that we're going to hash out.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't see it anywhere in the IP or in the product order form. So, I just want to make sure I hadn't put...
Mr. Craig, we also need to keep in mind that the product order form for 2013 incorporates the 2002 one. The 2002 one requires a soft source code to be placed in escrow and delivered to us if the company ever goes into receivership or liquidation. So, as long as we combine the two contracts, which they've done, we will have, the software, source code must be placed in escrows, in our opinion.
Okay, thanks.
Perfect. That's the exact question I was going to ask. Because if you take into consideration the deliverables based on the previous contract, because they were linked together, I would assume you would take into consideration the source code to the same effect. Because I think in the report, it said there was no evidence of that. But linking the two together, that should give us the rights to the source code. And to clarify, that's for our own use and our own development, not to sell just only for our own use and maintenance.
If they go into liquidation or receivership, sir.
And the next question I had for you is because it links in the previous contract, and in the previous contract, it talked about deliverables. And you based proper or improper payment based on deliverables, what is your definition of software delivered? And let me say, if we issued a purchase order for a boxed software product and the vendor delivered it to our dock, that is delivered, and we owe payment. Whether we install it on our systems or whether it's operational, in my opinion, is irrelevant of delivered. But in the case of this contract, what's your definition of delivered?
Well, the 2013 amendment...
Make sure you're talking to the microphone for the recording.
The 2013 amendment doesn't clearly define the software that's to be delivered. There's a chart which has, I think it's seven, maybe eight different modules, which Dr. Pace described. And there's not much more than that in terms of explanation of what's going to be delivered, how, or when. So, we had to sort of divine... So we had to sort of divine what that meant, and we did a little bit of investigation. But again, we didn't do a larger amount of investigation. It was not an in-depth investigation into the underlying facts. We mostly looked at the contract itself. So I would agree, if you're saying that it's not well-defined, it's not. So we had to sort of use what we had there and work with that to determine whether it had been delivered. And as I said earlier, I think that the payments would become more proper as more software had been delivered. If in fact it turns out more was delivered than we understood it to be, then the payments would be more proper.
Based on our limited investigation that we had time to do, it appeared that the concept of the contract was that the software was ready to be used and could be delivered. And using the, there's two ways of looking at what delivered means if it's not defined in the contract. And when you come up with your requirements, you should define terms like delivered. But delivered can either be what the word means, delivered in the common meaning of it is, is I hand it to you, or it could be interpreted by the custom and usage between the two parties. And since this is an ongoing contract, we could look back at the 2002 contract and see what delivered meant between the school board and the company that existed then, but we haven't been able to do that as of yet.
And I think what we should have done is clarified that deliverable is functional, project signed off, and granted, there may be more modifications down the road, but that is a vague term, and so to say proper or improper, that's just a matter of perspective. But thank you for your honesty and clarity on what you can give us there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question on the maintenance fees. Looking at the product order 1001, the initial 2002 product order and contract, it listed maintenance fees for 2007, well, it listed 2002 through 2011, basically, with incremental increases throughout that timeframe. 2011 was the last year that was identified in that contract for maintenance fees of $360,000. The second amendment was not until 2013. Did I miss something between 2011 and 2013 justifying a payment of $360,000 in 2012?
It's interesting that you raise that. We actually looked one of the last week, and it occurred to us that there, we weren't sure if there was a specific term for the original 2002 contract, and we looked for one, and we couldn't find a clear termination date. The software license, it's provided in there that it's perpetual, but as far as the maintenance, there's no clear term. I agree that the product order form identifies the amount and the timing of the payments for those particular years, but not for the one year that you just mentioned. So no, I don't think you missed anything. We were sort of continuing along that year, I think, but it wasn't strictly provided for in the contract.
And from a pure legal perspective, Ms. Belford? From a pure legal perspective, we have the green screen software, we were working on it, we were using it, and if they were actually maintaining it in 12 and 13 and we paid for it, I believe a court would find those payments were proper, and there was an oral or constructive modification of the contract. And the law gets really difficult in that area, because it's very difficult in that area. But I think those payments were probably, were okay, based on the fact that we were still using it, assuming they were maintaining it. We don't personally know if they were maintaining it then. That's our understanding.
And so just for clarification, moving forward, we are currently working on the 2013 amendment, which is tied back to the original in 2002. What is your legal interpretation of the expectation of maintenance fees at this point?
That's a problem, because, and we noted it in our report, is the maintenance under the contract for the new software was for two years. The maintenance for the 360 for the old software was not defined by term, but for the last three years of the contract, which was actually four years, the way they put the end date on it, but for the last three years of the contract, it was to be not more than 560. When you read that group as a whole, it sounds like the maintenance fee was supposed to be renegotiated after the new software was in place and operating. So we can't give you a price for it. We don't think there's a maintenance fee at all right now, and that's something that has to be negotiated, and I think that was pretty clear in the intent of it, but it's not crystal clear. From a legal perspective, it's clear. From plain, from just reading it, it's a muddle.
Okay, Karen?
In the fact that the board wants to be completely transparent, we've gotten a couple of public records requests, I've gotten a few phone calls, and so maybe you need to answer this, maybe not you, I don't know, combination of the both. How was it decided that this would be the law firm? And who hired them? Is there a written contract? How much is it? And has, is there any connection between any board members and your firm? And have you talked to any of the board members about this product, or any board members talk to them about this product at any time?
Are you asking me or the board?
I'll be happy to respond to that. Well, first off, in terms of why...
Well, we want to be transparent, so that's why I'm asking.
Sure, this surprise question, okay.
I can't tell you in advance.
I know, I understand that, Karen. Okay. At the last board meeting, we had a lot of unanswered questions, and at that board meeting, the board tasked me, to use Mrs. Belford's words, to protect the interests of the board and the school district. And so after listening to everything that took place and talking with Dr. Pace, the first step I thought I needed to take, given all the people that were involved with the CrossPoint issue, I felt I needed to pursue outside legal counsel, because part of the negotiations at some point involved Mr. Beislin. And so it was no offense at Mr. Beislin, but I felt I needed to get a totally unbiased opinion. And so in my discussions with Dr. Pace, I said, what can I do to go with an outside legal firm and get on it right away? And so she went across the hall, and Dr. Pace, do you want to come up to the microphone? We even talked about this yesterday, and you talked with purchasing, and by law, I can, the board can pursue outside counsel without going out for a bid, correct?
That's correct. Under statute, Mr. Parker assured me that it was okay to pursue legal services without a competitive process. As long as the invoice remains below $25,000, then it will have to go to the school board for full approval.
And so at that point, I started looking at the law firms that I knew, and I'm on the value assessment board, and this particular law firm represents the value assessment board. And so that was my first firm that I thought to go with. And so that was, we called them up, and because we had to act quickly, that was who we went with. And in fact, Mr. Kinsburg actually is Satellite Beach, and he is well-versed in these areas, and so he joined in on the conversations. I don't know if board members want to join in. They may know him, may know these other, feel free to join in. But that is my connection with this particular law firm. I know of them because of Satellite Beach. I know of them because of the value assessment board. Does that answer your question?
It wasn't for me, it was for the public.
Oh, I understand, but you asked the question, but does that...
Yes.
Any other board member want to chime in?
Sure. I know both of these gentlemen for quite a long time, but there's probably a lot of attorney firms that I know many of the lawyers in. So, but talking to them about the software prior to this, no, we did not have any conversation about the software. I was glad to hear they were chosen, because I know Mr. Kimberg has extensive experience in government contracts, and he's perfect for analyzing this from that perspective. So as a matter of transparency, I had no conversation with them about this prior to them being engaged.
Ms. D, do you want to weigh in?
Part of being engaged is during the course of it, either. We haven't talked about it except for a minute or so this morning, when you asked about some questions specifically about the report. So there have been no discussions, and I have known Mr. Ziegler for many, many years, and we've worked professionally on some organizations, chamber board directors, stuff like that.
Okay. John, do you want to weigh in?
I didn't discuss this with them, and yes, I know several attorneys at this law firm, at Perry Robinson, at numerous firms, but we didn't discuss this.
Okay.
I contacted them last week with a question about the investigation that they were doing, just as clarification, but no communication prior to them actually being hired.
And we did get a series of questions from Ms. Belford, that we answered all the questions, and the answers are in the report, but those questions were not discussed with any member of the board, and until we submitted our report, the answers had not been submitted and discussed with any member of the board.
Okay. Harold, do you want to weigh in at all in terms of legality of the actions I took?
No, I think the, I think you had absolutely legal right to do that, and you don't have to compete this kind of service, and I don't have any problem with what you did.
Okay. I just, given the seriousness of this and the amount of money at stake, I felt that I needed to protect the interest of the board and the taxpayers, the amount of money at stake, and I wanted to find the best people in the quickest amount of time, and that's what I did. Sure.
I will just add that once I was aware that they had been chosen to do this investigation, I had several people contact me and say that they thought that it was a very good choice because of the areas of expertise with this firm, which increased, you know, my appreciation for the fact that they were in fact the ones chosen, because I do think it's kind of a specialized area in understanding all that's going on.
And I'll just add in that I'm impressed with the way that you jumped in and handled all this, and got everything out in the public and transparency, and I think you did this district a good service by making sure this is all clear and getting the reports, and we're also going to, I guess, hear from RSM on their audit side. All the right steps were taken to make sure that we show the public that this is important and that we're aware and we care. So thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? Okay. And I think, I know when I talked with you yesterday, and I know Dr. Pace, we've, one of the things for the public is that we've been in constant conversation, and I know you're going to stay for the rest of this, but probably at the end of this, as you said, we had very short turnaround time for this, because I wanted to get at least preliminary reports, but we may be continuing on and having you work with us further on this contract, because it sounds like we have further work that we may need to do on it. So please stick around, and we'll see what further action the board may want to take.
Thank you. Thank you. We'd be honored to help.
Okay. Dr. Pace, round two.
As Mrs. Nacy mentioned, we also engaged RSM McGladrey to review the enterprise software process in general and to provide some additional information to the board and the community. Jennifer Murtha is here with us today, along with members of her team.
Good morning. My name's Jennifer Murtha. I am with McGladrey. McGladrey is the school board of Brevard County's outsourced internal auditors, and we did include the implementation of the system on our audit plan for 2016. After our meeting on the 26th, I was contacted by the chair to see if we could be here today and provide some analysis and benchmarking. I have with me here today Art Edwards, who's the audit committee chair, has joined us, members of my team, but Jeff Britton is a director with a specific focus in IT, so he's going to talk to you a little bit. Thanks.
Good morning. So first, just wanted to say thank you, members of the board, to the community, for the invitation to speak here. Probably unlike the presentation prior to this, which was obviously very objective, this is going to be a little bit more of a subjective view on the topic. As Jennifer mentioned, we were asked probably just a few weeks ago to do some initial benchmarking and help give the board, as well as the communities, a little bit more insight in just, you know, just kind of how these things typically go and what do they typically cost. So with kind of the limited information we had available, we certainly wanted to provide that insight, but I also want to make sure we caveat that with the right things moving forward. So just real quick, my name is Jeff Britton. I am a director within the technology and management consulting practice. I am the southeast lead for the IT strategy practice with our firm, and I typically specialize in coming in, helping projects that may have some issues get on the right track and become successful. Also, as Jennifer mentioned, we've been providing services to the district for, I think, approximately 15 or 16 years, so certainly have had a presence. We're very large in terms of national presence and also very prominent as well in the state of Florida, especially with the public sector. So real quick, obviously, a couple of weeks ago, we were requested to do a quick study around ERP implementations. Specifically, we wanted to look, try to look at other districts within the state of Florida. I will say, you know, the data, the information that we would want to benchmark typically was not readily available. We did try to make several information requests to other districts, which mostly came back unsuccessful, or in terms, it just did not come back. So we used what we could find, pretty much in the deepest corners of the internet, to dig up public records or any other headlines, announcements that came out. But I think, you know, as we move forward and we show some of the data, I think one of the key points to realize here is this is not always apples to apples. So when we talk about costs, and I'll talk this a bit more, you know, it includes certain things with different public entities and may not include those in others, but we still wanted to provide some insight there. The other thing to keep in mind is, you know, every five, five or six years, and it's really every year now, technology just continually advances. It changes. The ERP market is certainly just like that. In 1999, 2000, when these products were just first on the rise, they were certainly very expensive, very complex, and just obviously in its infancy. In 2005, it was very different. In 2010 and 2012, very different again. And even today, the market for ERP products is very, very different than what it looked like a couple of years ago. So we tried to leverage a lot of that information to pull back, obviously, public entities within the state of Florida, as well as in the, around the same timeframe, to do at least a, at least a somewhat fair comparison. To the right, you'll see that, you know, obviously, we took a couple of things into play, and I think it's already been pointed out previously, you know, we're just using a total contract value of approximately $8 million, which includes the cost of the software, and then the additional maintenance and support until 2018. And just again, some basic understandings that I think have been clarified previously. So real quick, let's take a look at costs, and I know this is always a big topic on mind with many people here. In general, I think the question, one of the questions we wanted to answer was, was this price fair? Was it fair for an ERP system? And we obviously couldn't just take price alone, because there's many, basically, components to the price of a software, to the price of a total project. So what we actually tried to do was, you know, again, pull back public entities within the state of Florida, paying attention to at least that they're getting the HR, finance, and accounting modules within the ERP system, and then really just take the high level, what was the total either projected or budgeted cost by that entity, and then taking a look at it and making a comparison in terms of employees. And we did this because the number of employees of an organization is actually going to dramatically influence a typical cost. So it usually drives software and licensing costs, it'll drive, you know, it probably costs for support. It'll also drive project complexity in terms of time it takes to test certain modules or do a certain amount of training. So when we do actually that comparison, you'll kind of see on the graph here, Brevard actually compares very well to any of the other public entities that we looked at in the state of Florida. So, you know, at a very high level, again, what we can say is, the price for the ERP product, or for any ERP product, is a very fair price received. So time to implementation. Obviously, I think, you know, between the meeting of last month, as well as, you know, today, and some probably of the other chats that I've had with Gino and those in the IT staff, there are obviously a lot of things that could have been done better, been done differently to realize a, you know, a better timeframe for delivery. You know, typically, what we see in public entities, through our research, most of the entities were budgeting approximately two to three years of implementation. In the private sector, we typically see about a one to two-year timeframe as an average, some maybe going a little bit over two. But, you know, those things are usually driven by kind of four key factors here. The product, product and module selected, obviously. Some products are more sophisticated, maybe more complex than others, and obviously, the more modules you select, the more time and complexity is going to be to have integration within those modules. The extent of change, so, you know, products will come in out of the box. How much do those need to change? And that'll obviously drive a large amount of basically coding, development, testing, planning, and anything else. So the level of customization obviously drives that. And then obviously, testing and resource training. You obviously do not want to go with, you know, modules as important as finance and HR and accounting, and, you know, obviously not train the right, train the people to use the product properly, giving them the documentation and so forth, and making sure that they're comfortable prior to cut over. So these will typically drive this, and I think, you know, from a 2013 start point, I mean, typically, the district would, you know, expect to end in the 2016, possibly 2017 timeframe, that would probably be a very reasonable estimate in time to implementation. But I think what this initially says is, in terms of timeline, it's obviously not an ideal situation to be in right now, but it's also not completely unheard of. Now, some of the other research that we wanted to provide, and again, this is, a lot of this is subjective, but we certainly want to, you know, I know in the last presentation from last month, they provided a couple... from last month, they provided a couple headlines, and it doesn't take a, it's an easy search to do to just look at ERP failures and see that this is something that happens all the time. And it's certainly, you know, what we see across many organizations, I think it was something like 72% of ERP projects out of a survey done by the Panorama Consulting Group where, took a lot longer than expected. 54% of the projects exceeded, and the cost must be in the white font there, but they exceeded cost. And you'll see kind, to the graph to the right, you know, typically, only about one-third of the projects really fall within the budget there. So, again, you know, the high-level message here is, it's obviously not an ideal situation, but it's also not uncommon. It's not, it's not to a point where it's unfixable. It is definitely something that you can resume and make successful. And that actually concludes this. So, you know, again, high-level topics here. I think the cost was very fair for an ERP product and the modules that you're receiving. The time for implementation, again, it's, you know, you're coming up on a typical two- to three-year timeframe. You certainly want to make sure that any timelines that are presented here moving forward are obviously expedited, but not to the point where it sacrifices the quality of your, of your delivery. And then again, just in terms of the general situation, you know, I've been speaking with, you know, my teammates and, you know, we're kind of of the same opinion that it's, it's very important to make sure that, you know, as you take a look at where you are today, looking, when you're looking back, the really, the only thing you should be looking back at is not making the same mistakes again, correcting those moving forward and getting to the place that you want to be.
Thank you. Questions? Andy.
You said you felt the cost was fair.
Yes.
I want to make sure I understand, this type of software is priced how? Based on, because you said for the number of employees. So, is it based on the number of data points? Is it based on the number of users that are actually going to log in, so all the employees would log into the employee portal? What is the most driving factor in pricing this type of software?
Certainly. I think probably the biggest driving factor is actually the product that you're going to select. So, probably some of the bigger names are with more functionality and just more presence are certainly going to be probably more expensive than maybe your smaller products. Outside of that, though, typically, what's going to drive your costs are obviously the modules that you select or that you choose to use. The number of users is typically billed as a software license, so any user who uses the system, who is part of the workflow, who has a defined role, there's a license cost associated with that. But then as far as a total project cost, again, it really just determine, it's depending on, dependent on the scope. You know, if you guys are doing things like defining workflows, requirements, or if they're doing that. Those typical things, those things are typically worked out in the initial contracts or the initial agreements, and then that determines the level of size of, you know, from the vendor or from any other perspective, any other party, when they come in, how much work they're doing, and then how long they're doing it.
Okay. So, when comparing other districts, unless you really know what modules they're purchasing, whether they purchase more functional modules or less functional modules, it's really hard. Like you said, we're not comparing apples to apples. But then also, so what I'm understanding is because there's a user license fee, if we were an organization of double the size, we could expect an increased license fee based on doubling the number of users.
That is typically.
Larger district, larger, larger cost. So, and we're about eight, over 8,000 employees, and we've got to consider that as part of the cost when determining what is a fair price. Now, as I understand it, there is a student portion of this software. We're going to actually have a parent portal. So, now you multiply that by nine to almost 72,000 people logging in, we can, should then consider that as whether or not that's a fair price when we're going to have nine times the number of users. That would tell me it's even a better deal from that perspective.
Yes, and we made sure we looked at actually just the number, the size of the organization and not necessarily the users.
Not trying to drive up our cost. I'm just trying to make a point.
No. And again, this, this is a very tricky situation. With every vendor, with every provider of the software, they're going to have different types of fees and different ways that they're going to bill certain things. I think overall, you know, the, what we found is, you know, for an ERP product that would do the things that are described, you know, at least in, you know, high level on the contract, this is a very fair price. It's obviously not just getting what you, what you paid for.
Anybody else? Oh, John. Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you for, for your explanation there, and my, a couple of my questions were specifically about that and how you, if you, if you looked at those other products or those other counties, exactly what they purchased. Did they purchase it per employer? Did they purchase a general license, or is it per user or whatever the case? So, I think we've exhausted that. I do have a question, though, on the overall, as you said, the timeline could be fair, two to three years. I would agree with you if, in fact, we had a product. And I think that goes back to the case of, on the order form, it's a product order form, when in fact, there never was a product. And in the industry, we call it vaporware, where you are developing a service, it is a service contract, basically, until you've developed that, developed that actual product, because nothing actually existed. If it's not true, Andy, then explain it.
The software was, ran against a copy of our existing database, and we were able to, I, something I had looked at, sat down with and ran through a bunch of modules and had them bring up a variety of different types of reports on our data and show different screens. Now, if they, if they were facades, they were very, very good facades, but I did run through the software with them. So, there was a functional product. Was it functional to the port, to the point that we could use it? Obviously not. Obviously, staff had concerns about it, and I'm glad that they did raise those concerns if it wasn't ready, but there was a product at that point in time when we made that decision that we were able to view and look at data.
Okay. So, that product never actually arrived, though. Is that true?
Whether it was installed on our servers or whether we were, it was operating on theirs, I didn't ask that question.
So, I guess my, I'll go back to my question. In your review, did you, is what we received an actual standalone product, or is this a top layer that goes on top of our existing product?
So, I have not had the time to do kind of a deep dive into this yet. I will say just some basic conversations with Gino. I was understanding that this was a development of a new product that was based on an old system or on the previous system. But outside of that, I can't really say, you know. I don't, what I, what I don't know is if there was a CD or, you know, anything else that had actually media on it that you could go and install at the time that, you know, any payment was made or the time they should have delivered that.
Okay. And then the last thing I'll say is you brought up a really great point at the end. To me, it's all about the forensic analysis of how we got here and how we make sure we don't do it again, right?
Right.
And that means you write airtight contracts, you write, you start with requirements, you work through a statement of work so that if there is scope creep, that you have a mechanism in place to take care of that. Are you going to continue your, your, your analysis or your investigation to make sure that, that you have a, give us an idea of how we can do that?
And Jen, I don't know if you want to comment on specifically with, I believe that the, that there is an audit in the plan, but I'll let you.
Included in our audit plan for 2016 is an audit of the implementation of the system. And since we've had, you know, a lot of conversation about this today, what our preference would be and what we will be bringing to the Audit Committee that ultimately comes to you is to take from this time forward and waiting for the presentation that's going to follow us to say what is supposed to happen from today going forward and to have our IT systems kind of walking along the way to be able to say, okay, this is what was supposed to happen. Did it happen from both an IT standpoint and from a payment standpoint? So, moving forward and going forward with a very active online real-time monitoring.
Okay. Thanks.
Guys, good?
I want to expand on where Mr., I think Mr. Craig was going with that, and it's going forward, what's going to happen going forward. And I just want to say, I think through all of this analysis, we've determined that, that staff did as best job as they could based on the magnitude of such a complicated product and implementation.
Yes.
Probably beyond their expertise because it's not a field that they work in very often. Many, or most organizations never really gather any expertise on this type of a process. So, in hindsight, maybe we should have either contracted a consultant to guide contracts and deliverables and help with some of the project timelines, since our staff has plenty of other important things that they need to do on a day-to-day basis, or maybe we should have hired an employee to do that. I'm thinking that going forward, we should recommend that we have an expert assisting who has experience in these type of projects going forward, be it a consultant, right, whether it be a consultant who we can contract to do that, or whether it would be more beneficial to hire somebody to do that. And I would look recommendations from RSM on, as to what typical guidance an organization like us would engage in to make sure these things go a little smoother and our best interest is looked into. Could you speak to that?
Well, why don't we, we still have to hear from Harris because they're going to be a part of this and what they're going to be bringing to the table, but I don't want to gloss over the fact that mistakes were made, Andy.
And that's the point, and I want to avoid them going forward.
Okay, but I just, right, okay. I just, and I hear what you were saying, but I just, you know, I heard you take, yes, staff did the best they could, but staff also made mistakes. Okay, I just want to make sure we don't separate the two sentences.
There were many mistakes in that, and I think they're due to not having knowledge or expertise in what they were engaging in, not by any ill intent at all.
No, there was no ill intent.
No ill intent, just it was, it was, it was a bigger project, and some expertise would have been very helpful at the beginning, and I'm saying is let's make sure we have that going forward.
Okay. But yeah, before we start going into what, yes, Mrs. Belford? No, I just said before we start going into other recommendations, I guess I want to get the third part in and what they're, what they're doing because that's the third piece of the puzzle. And so, that's why the attorneys are still staying. I know RSM's going to stick around, but going ahead.
Just at some point, I think we need to revisit the discussion of the task of the Audit Committee moving forward, looking only forward. So, if that is more appropriately placed after Harris speaks, I certainly understand that. I just think it should be part of the conversation.
Okay. I guess I would like to bring Harrison for, well, is your concern with them only looking forward, or are you wanting them to look back?
I just feel like really in order to know what we need to do going forward, we have to know what we did wrong in the past. We have to look at the process and where our current policies failed so that we can make sure that we are addressing that in completeness.
Okay. I guess I felt like we had that from the attorney's report. Do you not feel like we had that from the attorney's report?
My only concern is if you look at both the reports of McGladrey and of the attorneys, both have stated the fact that this was quick turnaround and that they really only did kind of a topical evaluation of what was taking place. And so, my concern would be that we make sure that whatever depth that we need to look at to ensure that we don't face this again in the future going forward, that we take that opportunity to look at it in depth as opposed to limiting ourselves to, between two board meetings.
Okay. Jennifer? Can you incorporate that into this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Lessons learned, best practices, those kinds of things. We'll incorporate that into our look forward.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see a problem with that. Is that good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Pace, round three.
Next on our agenda are our new partners with Harris School Solutions. And here with us today is our Senior Executive Vice President, Tim Fitzgerald, and Vice President Beth Sen to kind of share where we are and where they see us moving forward.
Welcome, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Dr. Blackburn, board and the community, thank you very much for inviting us today to speak and to share where we are on this endeavor. So, again, my name is Tim Fitzgerald. I'm the Senior Executive Vice President for Harris School Solutions, and I thought today, I'm also here with my Vice President of Support for the Financial Solutions Group, and I'm here today really to cover a couple of different things because I know that we are new to you. We're new faces, new company, new partner. And so, I thought I would cover the next 10, 15 minutes, maybe a little bit about who Harris School Solutions is. Also, talk about the CrossPoint acquisition, letting you know, okay, what did we acquire? When did we acquire and why did we acquire them? And then also talk about the CrossPoint solution as it's being deployed for Brevard Public Schools. Talk a little bit about how we got here. I know that we talked about this in the prior two sessions, so I'll try not to repeat a lot of the things that have already been said. How do we move forward? Really, that's more important to us as a new partner with Brevard Public Schools is ensuring that we move forward in the proper direction, the proper way, using the proper resources and the proper processes. And then talk about the product timeline because we have had an opportunity, our Vice President of Research and Development has sat down with our CrossPoint development team to see exactly where we are with the different modules that you signed up for in the last contract, and I want to make sure we at least provide you with the truth. I mean, want to tell you where we see things right now and where we have questions. And I know that we do have some conversations afterwards. I know we're going to talk about maybe the contract, pricing, things of that sort, just to make sure we're all on task, but just letting you know right now, these are the things I intend to cover this morning. Okay? All right, thank you. So, who is, who is schools, Harris School Solutions, I'm sorry. Who are we? We are actually part of a larger company called Constellation Software Incorporated. Constellation Software is a Canadian-based company based out of Toronto, Canada. It is a company that focuses really on different vertical markets for software. So, they specialize in a number of different areas, whether it's utility billing to schools, to security, to a whole myriad of different verticals. Constellation Software is traded on the Toronto Stock Exchange, and they, they are, and we are actually in over 30 different countries across the world. We have more than 30,000 customers, and we are actually doing very well as far as performance goes. So, I put up here, just so you know, a little bit more about Constellation, this is our performance for the past five years. We've gone from approximately $22 per share to over 550 roughly, and we're trending very, very well. So, we're a very stable company with about $11.5 billion market cap, and we, we know our business. We know what to do. We know how to go in and to work with different companies in different verticals. The acquisition of CrossPoint, just so you know, is not something uncommon to us. What we do is we grow organically. We also acquire. So, we acquire companies that fit our market, fit our need, and actually fit our strategy for growing our business. So, that's why we have been so successful, and that's why, you know, the acquisition of CrossPoint, the CrossPoint asset is not something that, that really concerns us or scares us. We're really here to make sure that you are successful as a customer of ours. So, as you can see from the, from the chart here, this is all public information as well. This is actually on the Constellation website. So, if you were to go to CSIC.com, you would find all this information as well. But Constellation is really made up of a set of wholly owned subsidiary companies, and we are part of Harris. Okay, so you can see up on the, on the screen right now, we are part of Harris, which is actually N. Harris Computer Corporation. And Harris Computer Corporation is run by three different regional presidents. It was actually started in 1976, and really, the focus back then was utility building solutions. That's how we got our start. In 1996, we were acquired by Constellation Software. In 2002, we had our first acquisition, successful acquisition, and we've continued to grow and also acquire where appropriate since that time. We've had 13-plus years of consistent growth and profits, and we also have more than 50 offices throughout the US and Canada. So, again, you know, going to Harris, or this is actually a, an overview of what Harris looks like. We have a lot of different verticals that we focus on at Harris, and those, those different verticals, those different markets are actually managed or overseen by three different presidents. We, Harris School Solutions, actually fall under what's called the Public Sector and Schools Group, and it is made up of about 10 to 12 different business units. And where we fit in is we are actually part of or one of those business units. So, Harris itself and even the Public Sector and Schools Group does not just focus on schools. We have a lot of other areas we focus on as well, such as public safety, local government, things of that sort. Okay? And then take, to break it down a little bit further to let you know where we fit, so Harris School Solutions, that, that space that I just showed you, we actually function as four different business units, which I oversee. We currently have a financial as well as a nutrition, a student information, and also a continuing adult education business unit. So, we focus on those four areas right now, and that's where we specialize. We specialize just K through 12 with exception to our specialty, our specialized solutions business unit, which is fairly new to Harris School Solutions. But overall, for the majority of our business, pretty much 99% of our business is focused on just K- on just K through 12. So, even the solutions that we deploy are specifically tailored to K through 12, they're not general ERP systems, they're not general payroll systems, they are tailored specifically to schools, their processes, their needs, and, and that's really our target. Okay, and so, who is, who is Harris School Solutions when you look at the Financial Solutions Group? Because that's where the CrossPoint software solution's going to fall under, it's going to fall under our Financial Solutions Group. This is our mission statement, just putting it up there so you can see exactly what we specialize in, again, we build centralized, web-based HR payroll and accounting systems. And the key word there is across all of North America, and it is for K through 12. The CrossPoint acquisition, so that's a little bit about Harris, I hope that explains where we fit, and also I did, I did fail to mention that we currently have more than 4,500 different school districts across North America right now that we work with. Okay? So, we, we know this space very well, and we do have a variety of different financial solutions that we actually deploy to different customers based upon the region in the country. Okay? So, the CrossPoint acquisition, okay, so I guess I just wanted to answer very quickly, or put out there, you know, what did we acquire, when did we acquire them, and why? Okay, so I guess first is what? We acquire the assets. So, CrossPoint LLC still exists, we purchased all of their assets, okay, so they're now ours, we own the intellectual property, we own the code, we own everything that CrossPoint had, they no longer own it, they transferred it to us. Okay? That occurred on June 26th, which was, which was about a month ago, and at the time, I did not envision I'd be here 25 days later in front of the board, but.
Surprise!
Here we are, so, that's great. And then why? I think more important is actually the whys. To be quite honest, we have a very, very small footprint in Florida, we had very, three very small schools that we've worked with, so this actually allowed us to expand our market, our K through 12 market into the Florida market. We actually can leverage CrossPoint's strong technology, their technology is very, very good, we go through a very thorough due diligence process, we are very familiar with the green screen product they had out, and also are familiar with the work that they've done, and the work that we've now done, us, have done with our new product, with our new solution. And our intent is, our total intent is to fully mature this, the CrossPoint solution set, and make sure we bring it to maturity. And we also want to make Pervard a showcase customer, and we, we know that you're a very large school, school district, or made up of a number of school districts, and we know that you are, for us, a great opportunity for us to showcase what we can do for all schools across all of Florida. And then, again, what we want to do is build upon that partnership that started in 2002, I believe, I know that it's been maybe a little rocky these past couple of years, but we want to make sure that we actually build that, you know, rebuild that partnership with you, and really truly work with you to make you successful. The solution, so I guess, I know we covered a little bit about this earlier on, but I want to talk a little bit about how we got here, how we plan on moving forward, some of the things that we saw, and talk a little bit about the product timeline. Okay? So, how do we get here? I think, I think Mr. Craig actually hit the nail on the head there when he talked about requirements, that there are, there apparently were not a whole lot of requirements, there are a couple of different things that we think that were areas for improvement, right? So, I think the processes are one of the first things. The processes are not as tight as we probably would run, I know they're not as tight as we would run Harris, Harris School Solutions. Our development processes are much tighter than I believe what was in place for CrossPoint, and in fact, you know, we use an agile methodology for our development lifecycle, and so, we're going to institute a lot of those processes and procedures into the CrossPoint team. In fact, like I said, the CrossPoint team is now part of Harris, so I mean, I refer to them as CrossPoint, but really they're Harris, and they are all Harris employees, just so you know, they all came over as Harris employees, and I'll touch upon that in a moment. But really, it comes down to the issues we, that we look at are the processes, the requirements, as I said, Mr. Craig, I think, hit the nail on the head, the requirements were not very well documented, if at all. Were they were documented, if there was a change, I think a lot of verbal commitments made, but without a lot of writing, not a lot of documentation, not, not any communication to the board and/or to the public to let them know what's going on. That, those are really some of the key things. As an example, if I look at the financials just alone, we went back to our development staff, and we said, okay, what, what have we done, what have we added to the product that was not in the original requirements, as we understood them? We very quickly came up with 20-plus enhancements that were performed to the product that weren't documented. And aside from the financial implications, it impacts the timeline. I mean, you, this is an enterprise resource, you know, planning program, it's actually meant to support an enterprise, it's a very large project, a lot of moving parts, and to have changes that are done that are not documented is, quite frankly, a little concerning. So, that in and of itself is just something to be aware of, there's 20-plus changes with no documentation, essentially, all word of mouth, and that, that may have worked for a smaller project, it doesn't work for a large project. So, how do we move forward? So, very quickly, I mean, it's just another way of saying, what do we do differently, which I think was already asked earlier on, and so the way, what do we think needs to be done differently is a number of things. First is new management, so I just want to make sure that you're aware, that CrossPoint now falls under the Financial Solutions Group for Harris School Solutions. That Financial Solutions Group is managed by an Executive Vice President who reports to me, that person has four Vice Presidents under them, so they have an R&amp;D organization, a professional services organization, support, as well as sales. The prior owner from CrossPoint, just so you're aware, just want to make sure we're very clear on this, she is with us for a very short engagement, so we, we kept her on board to allow us to help us transition from CrossPoint over to Harris, and that engagement will be complete by the end of this month. Okay? So, so aside from that person, all the other developers and support staff have come over, and they are now Harris employees. Okay? And then also, project manager, we talked about this a little bit earlier, I think Mr. Craig may have brought this up as well, the project manager, we have already gone out and started a search for a project manager, in fact, we just put an offer out to one yesterday, somebody who's experienced, we need, we're going to have a dedicated project manager to just this project. I think that you probably should do something similar, I know that it was mentioned by Mr. Ziegler, about, on your end, I think that you need one on your end as well. Those two project managers are what's going to keep this on track and moving forward. We're also increasing our development staff, so we've already posted positions for two PHP developers, because we looked at the current staff and said, okay, we need a little bit of help, and so we're adding to that, and right now, we're, we're hiring two, and we'll look at, look at what, what makes sense in the future. So, that's, that's where the development staff. And then formalizing the timeline. The timeline itself, as I said, I mentioned this previously, you know, we've done an initial assessment, our Vice President of Research and Development sat down with the CrossPoint team, looked at the contract, looked at the modules that were committed to you, and said, okay, here's what I think, here's, basically, everything I know right now, and we're still digging into it, here's what I think, we can, here's what I think the timeline is. So, whatever timeline we put up there, we just want to make sure we're realistic, we want to make sure that we're honest, that we're not hiding the ball, we want to make sure that what dates we put out there, we stick to, if they change, there has to be a reason. Through change management, so that the project manager from both sides is aware of, okay, if there's a change, okay, well, how's it going to impact cost, time, and, you know, and pretty much quality of the software? So, we want to make sure that everything is known upfront, before a change is made, it has to be agreed to in writing. So, if I look at the current state right now, I know you're a legacy customer, we are still supporting both versions, okay, so that's why you're paying maintenance for the legacy, and also you have the web component out there as well, so we are supporting both. I know there's some question, and we could talk about this later on, about, you know, what is complete, what isn't complete, what should we be paying, what should we not be paying, but that nonetheless, letting you know, we are supporting both products, and we still have the staff on board to do that. The upgrade path, the one thing that's interesting about this upgrade path, which is different from a lot of other migrations or upgrades to a new product, is that you're getting a complete technology overhaul, but there are a lot of benefits to the way you're going about it. Okay, you're getting a web-based solution, there's no data migration, so a lot of upgrades, you have a data migration. Data migration is key, I don't know how much everybody realizes how much of a thorn in everybody's side that typically is, whenever you have a large deployment or a large upgrade, the, the migration itself, the time it takes to get that data migrated over, to validate it, to check it, to ensure that it is intact, is time-consuming and very costly. So, there is no data migration here, so that's, that's one thing to be aware of, we overhaul the technology by leaving, but left the database intact. We are also, that allows you to retain the history, also allows you to do a phased rollout. So, on a Friday, for example, your, your end users theoretically could be using the product, the green screen product, per se, when a new module is ready, it gets pushed out on a Saturday, for example, and assuming that it's gone through QA, UAT, and it's ready to use, theoretically, your users could come in that Monday and just start using the product, the web-based version, not the legacy green screen. So, it allows you to do that phased rollout with very minimal disruption, if at all. And then also, I guess, the other thing to be aware of is, by doing this, by upgrading to the web version, while you're going to an upgraded product, you're going to have easier user adoption, because when you think about it, the hardest part is, you know, teaching a dog, old dog new tricks, in this case, those old dogs are still using the same processes and procedures that are in the code or actually in the product itself, it's just that now they have a new way of getting to it. And yes, some things will change in the web, the web is different than, you know, client-server based, but it is easier from an adoption perspective, it's easier to train your current end users on the new solution, new product. So, that's current state. The timeline, just letting you know that the, so here are all the different modules that are promised to you in the current contract. So, what we did is we looked at the, the current contract, we sat down with our development staff, and we said, okay, when can we deliver? And so, we went through financials, we know financials has been delivered, but there are some things that were identified in the user acceptance testing, so we're going to resolve those, and those we're committing to get to you, actually, if not within the next week, certainly in August of this year, or next month. The Enterprise Information Portal, that is complete, except I do know that there was a request to actually add some security around that, so that's in the works, and that will be done by October 2015. The Vendor Portal, currently, as we look at it right now, it looks like it's going to be February of next year. Employee Portal, based upon our initial assessment, is going to be March of next year. And then HR Payroll, so the key to HR payroll is, it was rolled out, it was complete, we got feedback from your staff saying that there were issues, and I think Mr. Ziegler mentioned this, so it's out there, it's been used, and then there was a request to change some of the processes, change the way that the screens flowed, and so we actually did that redesign for you. We're actually working on that right now, that will be complete in time, when I have, I have July 2016 on there, because that is a key date for any school, I mean, the fiscal year starts July 6th, July of, every year, right? So, you have to ensure that you have that system up and running, so you can cut payroll on July 1st without missing a beat. The timeframe that's built into here will also allow you to do your parallel testing months before, because I think there's eight pay cycles, I believe, you have to test or maybe run a parallel, maybe a little bit more, but the team has gone back, looked at that, and said, okay, we will deliver the other modules that are necessary to ensure that we get the parallel testing in place and complete, so that we're ready to go on July 1 of 2016. Okay? Now, the, the two things, the two last items here, and I'll be honest, this is the, these are two open items right now, one is supply chain, and the other is workflow engine and project tasks. We've asked around, and it goes back to, I think, what Mr. Craig said, what are the requirements? We, we don't know. And we've asked a lot of, some staff, and also some folks with the school, just as to, okay, what exactly is this? And I'm not sure that anybody really knows at this point, so this is full disclosure, letting you know, we want to find out what the requirements are and what the needs are around that. So, that's the timeline, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, and I guess I'll just open it up to any questions that you may have.
First, could I ask that you would provide the, the copy of your presentation, either to Pam or to Debra, to somebody? There was some stuff I was trying to write down frantically, but didn't get all of it there, so.
You'll get full copies, it's not a problem, it's actually on this computer here, but you can just.
Okay, wonderful. The other question I had, you mentioned that you had purchased all of CrossPoint's assets, and for the clarification of our community, where does EDR fit into those assets? Because there's been some discussion as to entity, identity.
Yeah, so the, so where EDR fits into this essentially was, I guess, CrossPoint initially, I think it might have been CrossPoint Inc., had, they were working on, I believe, an arrangement with some other partners, whatever, they created EDR, they transferred everything over to EDR, and then when they decided to pursue a different path, they then transferred everything back to CrossPoint LLC, so it's all been transferred back to CrossPoint LLC. CrossPoint owns, or owned rather, until we purchased them, all of the assets, the source code, and everything associated with the product. CrossPoint LLC, as I said, is in existence, but they can no longer work in the schools industry, we have all their code, they can't use the code, I mean, it is ours, lock, stock and barrel. And again, we do this all the time, so we have a team of lawyers that look at all this during the due diligence process, so we do know that, in fact, we have all the assets.
Great. And you mentioned that you work with three, I, I'm not sure if it was small schools or small school districts in the state of Florida, can you share who those are?
You know what, they escaped me right now, but I can provide this to you afterwards, not, not a problem at all, it just escapes me right now, and I'm not sure if my Vice President of Support may or may not know that. Do you know the names? No? Okay, yeah, so we can get that to you afterwards, it's not a problem.
The last thing I just want to clarify, you had mentioned that under a very short-term arrangement, the former president of CrossPoint is working for you all, is that, does that have a closed term on it? I mean, have you stated this is, you will no longer be involved after this date?
Yes, that's actually, there's a very specific date, and that date is this month, by the end of this month, actually, I believe it's by the end of, middle of next week, I believe, I think it was a 30-day, and it was a short-term engagement to help pretty much just transition everything from CrossPoint over to Harris. And that person is not employed by Harris, nor is there any intent to employ that person at Harris.
Yeah, I made it very clear to the two individuals that we didn't want that person here involved in our account or anything to do from this point forward.
Okay.
And they understand that.
Anything else?
First of all, thank you very much for taking the time to come and explain all that, it was a great presentation. Can you, just for the benefit, because of folks that have been following this, explain what maintenance means to y'all?
Yeah, so essentially, maintenance, maintenance is the ongoing, it's what you pay for ongoing support of products that you have purchased, essentially. So, maintenance is the fee that typically gets paid every year, so that, for example, if you buy product X, right, product X is being used by your end users, and they determine that, you know, they want to call in for support, just like anybody would call in for any other, you know, help on any other system, that maintenance fee is what enables us, Harris, to provide that support to end users who are calling with, calling in with issues or questions or problems, and then resolving those issues as well. So, if it's a problem or a bug with the system, we, depending upon the severity of the problem, whether it's a SEV-1, SEV-2, or SEV-3, it is, okay, we provide you with the workaround while we put in place a, a code fix by X date, or if it's, for example, a SEV-1, a severity-one issue, typically those are mission critical, which means that a code fix has to go out immediately, and you have to get the system back up and running as quick as possible.
Will there be, or is there, or do you use a trouble ticket?
Oh, yeah.
Product that will, that will allow our people to do that? Because I don't, obviously, it's not in our, it's not defined here.
Yeah, that's a very good question, yeah, we do actually have a web-based, and actually, I could have my support VP come up and talk about that, but we do actually have a CRM solution in place, and we are actually, we currently use one product right now, but we are actually, we're migrating to another CRM solution, but there is the ability, I mean, that's, that's how we do business, right? Whenever it is an issue, customers primarily just log into the web, or they can call us or email us or what have you, it creates a ticket, then somebody follows up with the end user and solves the problem. And it requires a code change, did we do the code change, it just requires maybe walking them through an issue or a problem with the software, then it's a very quick call.
All right, thanks. I assume from your presentation that that exists, I just want to make sure that we had that clarified, thanks.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you for being here, and I know we talked briefly before, I want to go over a few things, because this is CrossPoint product and CrossPoint LLC still exists, are you changing the name of the product, or?
We haven't gotten that far yet, yeah, so, we, we have not determined that just yet.
Okay.
Like I said, the technology is very sound, and we haven't made any decision as to whether or not to change the name or what have you, but I mean, if it makes sense, we'll do it. We're not doing it just for the sake of changing the name.
Okay.
In fact, as we, within Financial Solutions, for example, we currently have eight different financial packages of solutions that we provide to different customers across the US and Canada, we have a flagship product for Canada. Typically, the names may, you know, stay similar to what they were whenever the company that got acquired or brought into the Harris fold, typically the name sticks and stays with the product, so that customers, existing customers can relate to, okay, this is the product that I'm used to, even though it falls under the Harris family, it is still our product. So, whether or not we change the name, just depends upon whether or not there's actually a need, so.
And gathering from the history that you provided us, Harris doesn't normally buy products that don't have value, is that correct?
We never buy products that don't have value.
So, you saw something in this product, and maybe even the relationship between Pervard County? Did you see some value in our relationship that we had?
Oh, absolutely, and as I said earlier, I think that we don't, we don't buy companies As I said earlier, I think that we don't, we don't buy companies just to buy companies. We look at every company and make sure that there's actually, one, it's got to be financially sound. We have to have a return on investment, right? But also, we look at this as an opportunity to really increase our footprint in Florida because we really had a very minimal, if at all, very, very almost nonexistent footprint in Florida. And we saw this as a great opportunity to come into Florida. The technology is very good. I mean, I know that there's some questions today about, you know, completeness and things of that sort, but the product in and of itself is a very good product technically. And so we saw the technology. We also saw that the relationship that, you know, we can forge, the partnership essentially that started in 2002 was, from what I understand, a very good partnership up until maybe probably the past couple of years. So we started hitting rocky roads, what have you. We're here to make sure that we actually mend that fence and move forward. And our goal really is to make sure that you're successful because as I said before, we want you to be a showcase customer for us across Florida and show others, hey, here's what we can do. So...
And that would work for us. Do we continue to keep the software?
Do you continue to keep the software?
The code.
Yeah, whatever, we just have to look at the agreement, whatever's in the agreement is, you know, I mean, I, I can't answer legal questions right now because I have to sit down and go through, you know, to figure out what's in the, in the agreement or not. But if it's in the agreement, then, you know, we're not changing the agreement on you.
Because some of the things that we do here are different than what other companies do. So like, we may not want every end user to delete things. We want only our super-users to delete things. And so those are the kinds of changes that we make internally from your product. And we want to be able to take the product and to continue to hone it to what our processes are. And we just want to make sure that we're going to continue to do that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, whatever's in the agreement is, is what we're going to live by. And I know that we got to maybe address it afterwards or talk about that. It's one of the discussion points we mentioned earlier. And so we can address it at that time. It's not, it's not, we're not looking to take anything away from you that you already had. If it's in the agreement, like I said, we want to make sure that it's in the agreement. We assumed, we purchased all the assets and then the agreement that goes along with that.
And I completely agree with you. You need a project manager and we need a project manager. So we need to have somebody. Right now, the way it's working is, you know, finance, you know, Miss Presty, Miss Pace, Buto, everybody is a part of it. You have five people making the decisions. We need some, we need one person. They can make all decisions for each of their organizations or departments, but we need a project manager internally to work with your project manager to keep us on task.
Yeah, you need a central point of contact, really, that's it. Just to make sure that you have somebody minding the store and watching, okay, are we missing, are we hitting all the milestones that we've set? Are the deliverables there? Are things being signed off on? Is, well, you saw my example with the, just financials alone, there are 20-plus different enhancements or modifications to the product where there's no documentation. Those types of things impact, like I said, not just cost, it's also time. So I'm not quite sure. I know that it was significant. I didn't want to put, necessarily put it up there because I did have an estimate of ours, but that wasn't the point. Just letting you know that I know it did delay your product significantly, just even adding those 20 enhancements.
And the July 11th finance implementation, what do you know about it and its success from your perspective?
Yeah, so what I know right now is that code went out on time. It was actually tested. It actually went very well, except that I know there are some issues, I believe 30-plus bugs, which is not unusual. They're very small, very minor. And as I said, our, our plan is to have that pushed out to you, the fixes essentially, I think within the week, but I put on the calendar August because I wasn't sure, I know we're the very end of the month. But I do know that they're due to come out here any, you know, any day, actually. But as I said in the presentation, August 2015 is what we're committing to.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming here and giving us a presentation. I look forward to looking at it again because I'm with you, I couldn't take it all in the first time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I just want to say first, thank you. I know when we met last month, this would be the last place you expected to be here, but I want to say both you and Beth have been nothing but responsive. I have sent numerous text messages and called you, and nobody travels more than you do. This man is either getting on a plane or getting off a plane every time I talk with him. And you've been very reachable, very open and honest. Our next steps from here is that we're going to schedule a meeting between Harris and our staff and legal parties on both sides. And we're going to hammer out a very thorough agreement this time and know what the milestones, the benchmarks, what you're going to do, what we're going to do. And that will be our next step from here. And so from there, we will go...
And then it would come to the board for approval?
And then it would come to the board for approval, absolutely. Everything open, honest, transparent and very clear on where we go from here. So any more questions or comments from the board?
I think it might be worthwhile, while this is happening, until we put a project manager in place to also get some consulting assistance from Jeff Britton from RSM to help guide us in what we need to do, whether we have an internal person who can take the helm, whether we need a contractor, whether we need to hire somebody.
You don't think somebody from Mr. Buto's office could do that?
Maybe, I don't know. I don't know. Maybe Mr. Buto will chime in on that. I don't know what the talent set is relevant to this type of software.
Well, why don't we let Stat, why don't we let Deborah talk with Mr. Buto and kind of have some, and Dr. Blackburn, why don't we let them decide what we need to do from this point forward from a staff perspective? That would be my recommendation. So, okay. Dr. Pace, do you want to wrap us up?
I, I think you did a great job with that, Mrs. Nisi. I know that yesterday when we met with the group, we identified three specific areas for additional follow-up and discussions, as you said, between the two parties and legal sides on both of those. Those were the project timeline and those very defined deliverables and requirements for the remaining modules that are a little unknown at this point in time, as well as discussing future payments, what the contractual agreement requires the district to do, the expectations from Harris. And again, they've indicated they would honor that contractual agreement, but we have to make sure we all understand what those defined agreements really are. And then finally, to clarify, as Mr. Craig has brought up, where we stand with the source code. What is that agreement that goes back to 2002 that we would want to continue so that we can continue our work and move forward from here? So thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Outstanding presentations. Anyone need a break before we go into public comment?
I would like to talk to some of these people before they leave.
Probably that's why I was asking, that's why I was asking if you wanted a break.
I want a break.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and we will return for public comment.
The board meeting will reconvene in approximately two minutes. The board meeting will reconvene in approximately one minute. The board meeting will reconvene in approximately 30 seconds. The board meeting will begin in 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2...
Welcome back. We're now at the public comment portion of the agenda. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Clarification of information presented and answers to questions specific to district business and educational matters will be posted on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." Please be reminded that profane, abusive, or slanderous speech is not permitted. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name for the record. We have five speakers who have signed up. First speaker is Dan Bennett, followed by Vicky Dyer, followed by Richard Smith. Good morning, Mr. Bennett.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning, members of the board. Good morning, Dr. Blackburn. Hello, my name is Dan Bennett. I'm the vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. And Dr. Blackburn, welcome, welcome to our county. Before I left the classroom to serve in this role, I was a math teacher and department chair at Space Coast Junior Senior High. Before that, I taught social studies and math at Central Middle School, where I earned my national board certification. And before that, I go back to the last millennium where I taught social studies at New River Middle School in Fort Lauderdale. I was there when they opened the new building. That was my third year of teaching. In my fifth year of teaching, we got a new principal, Mr. Jan Beal, who I think, who I think you know. It was neat to have him there because he was my sixth-grade science teacher when I attended Ramwood Middle School. I know you know Ramwood Middle School as well. He was my sixth-grade math, uh, science teacher. Eighth grade, I had Paul Albert. And I know he's still, he's still at Ramwood Middle. Now, I know you're a principal of Ramwood Middle. It wasn't when I went through or else you'd be a much, a much older person. But, um, anyway, Mr. Beal and Mr. Albert are probably two influences in my life while I went in, while I went into teaching. By the way, my career began at Rogers Middle School, which they closed, repurposed to a, to an education center. So welcome to our county. I really like it here in this county. We have great schools, we have a great way of life, there's no Tim Jenkins barbecue. And the locals don't know that U.S. One is really called Federal Highway. We don't have a school board building that we call the Crystal Palace, but other than that, it's, it's just perfect. I want you to know why I left the classroom after 14 years to go into union work. I noticed that way too many of my friends and colleagues were leaving this profession. Now, we do a good job here of blaming the legislature for everything that's wrong, but we have to realize that there's also decisions that come out of this building that ultimately crush the morale of teachers. In my job, I get a unique view that not everybody gets. I'm always amused when I tell someone in this building about a problem in a school and then I get a report back that they called the principal, the principal reported, there's no problems here, everybody's happy. Well, I get a perception that teachers will tell me stuff that, that principals won't always report to the district. Now, I can never dive into in just three minutes the issue of teacher morale, but to start, mindless paperwork is growing. Just to give an example, we all know that teachers need to teach the standards, but in this county, it doesn't count as teaching to the standards unless it's written in the plan book, written on the board, written on each piece of student work, posted on the wall next to the student work that's posted, and the children can recite the standards when an administrator comes in the room and asks. It's driving teachers out of the field. We have many more examples of paperwork and documentation that just add up to work that has to be done. And it doesn't really get to the core goal of improving student learning. On top of that, we're gearing up this summer for yet another paradigm shift that already has teachers buzzing. I do this job on behalf of my colleagues because I want my colleagues to be heard. Ultimately, what I want you to know about me is that I want all teachers to be great. But we all agree to that. We all want teachers all, all to be great. But on top of that, I want teachers to love their jobs and I want teachers to stay. And as I welcome you to this county, Dr. Blackburn, I want to extend that same wish for you. I want you to love your job. I want you to love being here in Brevard County, and I want you to stay. Thank you.
Vicky Dyer, followed by Richard Smith and Darcy Haddo.
Okay, my name's Vicky Dyer. I'm a member rights specialist with the Brevard Federation of Teachers. And I've worked for BFT for 35 and a half years. As a result, every once in a while, I think, there's nothing new. I mean, I've seen it all, you're not going to surprise me. And then all of a sudden, something happens. This school board agenda shocked me. I had assured Dan and Richard that we couldn't possibly lose too many more teachers. We'd been losing them all year long. They will wait until the day they were eligible to retire, and they retired. They didn't wait till semester, end of the year like usual in years past. There are five pages of retirements and resignations on this school board agenda. And the names, as I went through them, I just got more depressed because I knew them. I mean, they're good teachers, very good teachers. And then you got to the resignations. As I enter my database, I can see how many years' experience they have. These teachers have two, three, four years' experience. They're effective teachers, or they wouldn't have lasted past one year, but they're just up and quit. I'm sure... I'm sure, Dr. Blackburn, if you talk to anyone in this room, any administrator, any teacher, they can tell you why. I've had teachers tell me they're retiring because they can't teach anymore. They get a teachable moment, and they have to move past it, because they have to get this done, this done, this done, in a certain length of time. And it's just very sad, because like I said, I, I know all these people, and I've known them for a long time. Dr. Blackburn, I do not envy you the job you have ahead of you, but I certainly wish you all the best. Thank you.
Richard Smith, Darcy Addo, and our last speaker, Margaret Gudelod.
Good morning. Especially good morning to you, Dr. Blackburn. My name is Richard Smith. I'm a former physics teacher at Titusville High School. I'm president of Brevard Federation of Teachers. I began teaching in nineteen seventy-two. There's not a lot of people in this room that were even born then, but I want you to know, like, like Dan, it was almost a surprise to me that I ended up in this position, and for many of the reasons you've heard him say, I'm here. Welcome to Brevard County. I think that, overall, I think you're going to have a, a good stay, and I'll, I'll tell you why I think so, because I watched very carefully the interviews, and I listened very carefully. And I'm a sailor, and one of the things about sailing that is just critical is a steady hand on the wheel, and I believe you have that steady hand. I'm looking forward to working with you. I believe that we can get a lot of things done and, and perhaps proactively avoid some things that can cause problems. As you have already heard, teacher morale is an obvious issue, and I know that that's something that you intend to deal with effectively. I think, I think your plans are, I think, will work well. As teacher morale in this county improves, education in this county will improve, because that's just how it is. And it's the classroom unit that makes things work. Now, I'd, in no way am putting down any other jobs in this, in this entire structure of the nine thousand, eight thousand employees, but the teachers in the classroom is where, where it all happens, and that's where the, the real improvement can occur. And I, I think that we could see this, you know, fairly quickly with, as decisions are made. So, I, I want you to know that I extend a hand of friendship, I extend the hand of collegiality, and I extend the hand of another educator, hoping that you are the captain that we've really been looking for. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name's Darcy Addo. I'm a teacher. I'm a parent of two children in Brevard Public Schools, and I'm also the wife of another teacher. Teachers need more time to plan. We all know that. I don't think there's anybody who would disagree with that. But to make a contract decision that impacts an entire community without taking the input of the community is, at best, undemocratic. Since the decision about early release Mondays every day, every Wednesday, I'm sorry, early release Wednesdays every Wednesday has already been made, I don't necessarily want to talk about the decision. I'm more interested in talking about the process that was used to make that decision. Before the calendar was made, I'm curious if students' best interest was considered or if just teacher planning time was considered. Were things like the education of students in pull-out services, ESOL students, gifted students, students who have OT and other pull-out students, were they considered? How this would impact them? What about children whose IEPs were written to require a specific number of minutes of intervention per week? Was that considered? Obviously, our teachers will make accommodations for them to make sure that their IEPs are met, but what impact will it have both on the children and on the teachers who teach those children? Was cost considered? We know now that it's going to cost families $600 per week to put their children in after-school daycare. $600 per child per week, was that considered beforehand? I don't think it could have been. I know Ms. Nisi's looking confused, because it's on the agenda for today, so we know that. So, that couldn't have been considered, because we didn't know it until very recently. And what about the families who rely on after-school daycare, outside of the school? Were those community daycares consulted to find out what impact it would have on their families? And importantly, we had limited early release last year. Did we give an opportunity to get feedback on the efficacy of teacher planning, how it worked? And maybe more importantly, how it impacted the learning environment when we had early release? So, if you ask teachers, students, administrators, and families, "What is going on?", they will tell you. But this decision was made without consulting any of those groups, and we didn't have an opportunity to weigh in. And that seems somewhat undemocratic, to treat it as only a contract issue, when it certainly is more than a contract issue. And I think maybe the bigger problem, too, is there was no real root cause analysis done here. We didn't look at, "Why are we having an issue of teacher planning time?", and if we did that, we could look back and see that this really stems from where our planning time was lost, which was really in the implementation of the SSNP. So, if we do that and do a root cause analysis, get to the bottom of the problem, then we could fix it without sort of putting a Band-Aid on a proverbial gunshot wound. So, going forward, I hope we could kind of work together to solve the problem.
Okay, Margaret? Who I have as our last speaker?
Good morning, board. My name is Margaret Goudlock, and I'm here this morning as a member of the Brevard Parents' Action Committee. We'd like to welcome you, Dr. Blackburn, to Brevard Public Schools, and we look forward to working with you, sir. I'm a parent of two children in Brevard Public Schools. My youngest daughter, Charis, is seven years old. She's attended Title I Golf View Elementary School in Rockledge. My daughter, Lydia, is twelve. She is a CAP, Civil Air Patrol Officer, and she will be attending Edgewood next year in Merritt Island. We've had a really good experience with Brevard Public Schools, but I'm here because I'd like to tell you a little bit about our work with the Brevard Parents' Action Committee. We were founded in twenty-twelve upon the closure of Gardendale Elementary School in Merritt Island. And since that time, we've worked diligently with parents, teachers, and students. We have an active board that is comprised of members of the community from all over Brevard County. You'll have to excuse me if I'm a little nervous, because it's been a while since I've spoken before you guys. We maintain a website and a Facebook page as well. Our mission, sir, is to keep BPS on track. And track means to us transparency, respect to our parents, accountability to the public and our taxpayers, and communication for our kids. Please feel free to contact us or read our materials. We've written papers on the EDR purchase. We followed up with this software, which is critical for the functionality of our whole entire district. We'd like to see some real improvements and some strong leaderships, sir, going forward. We've written a paper on the sales tax referendum, and we've made recommendations for long-term management and planning, including recommendations for senior staff accountability. We'd love to help you. We'd love for you to listen to our opinions and take advantage of our expertise, and we wish you well in your new endeavor, sir. Thank you.
The board wishes to thank this morning's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. Does any board member wish to comment or follow up? Yes, Mr. Craig.
I just wanted to comment on Ms. Addo's comment about, and, and make sure that we are clarifying. Yes, Ms. Addo, we do have a, something on the agenda regarding after-school childcare, but just for the public's knowledge, it is not $600 per week. It is a introduction of an early release day pass, which is $600 for the entire year, which is for forty early release days, which works out to $15 per Wednesday. So, it is not $600 per week.
Yes. Anybody else? Okay, that moves us into the consent agenda, Dr. Blackburn.
There are twenty-four agenda items under this category, two with prior information.
Does any board member wish to pull any items? Mrs. Belford?
F-11, F-20, F-25, and F-27.
Wow. Okay. Anybody else?
F-11, F-25, I'm sorry, I'm out of order on you. F-11, F-20, F-25, and F-27.
Okay. Andy?
F-15.
Karen? Okay. I mentioned this to Arby, but I don't know if Arby would want to. I, I actually want to pull F-18, just because I want to share one of the good things we're doing. Arby, I talked with you a little bit about that. This is the transfer of the surplus school bus, because I just want to share one of the great things we're doing in partnership with another agency. Anything else? So, what few items we have left. Pam, if you'll move all of those items, I'll entertain a motion to accept what's left on the agenda, with the exception of the items that were pulled for discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mr. Craig. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so which item is up first? Okay, financial statements, F-11. Mrs. Belford?
And this is, I'm going off of the reference on our, it was from the email that was sent out regarding the announcement of the public hearing. Referenced it as F-11, although I don't see the actual announcement attached to this agenda item, but I was hoping...
It was F-12.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Wrong number. I was hoping that we could just have a brief explanation of the announcement of the millage, so that our public understands where we're coming from on that and what that all actually means.
Okay, so we pulled the wrong one?
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay. Karen, would you come up? And what Mrs. Belford's looking at is an ex- is an explanation. The advertisement will be in the paper this weekend for our millage.
That's correct.
And we go through this every year, although the millage rate is going down, because it, millage rate is compared to the rollback rate, it actually will be advertised as an increase. So, will you do? Yeah.
Yes, that, y'all are absolutely correct, and, and thank you for the warning, Mrs. Belford, that this was going to come up, so that I could go through quickly, explain it to my staff, who's never been through it before, so that we, then I could kind of, sort of, get a dry run to try to explain it to, to y'all. I actually updated three of the slides that Judy will be presenting to you next week. Let's see if I can get that. Okay. So, this is what our, our millage looks like right now. Is that not working? Oh, okay, we're over here. Okay. As long as we're somewhere. Okay, so our millage for the year we just clo- or that we're closing currently, but that has physically ended, our total millage rate for both operating and capital was at 7.339 mills. Our proposed millage for the new year is 7.275, and I'm going to use Mr. Bennett's words, "That is dictated to us by the legislature." The state legislature sets our millage every single year. Y'all have no power to change it. I'm going to skip to the next slide. This is what our rollback rate looks like for next year. We have to compare our next year proposed, again, the 7.275, to our rollback rate, which is a, which is a confusing and, but it's a math calculation. It's just, it's, it's a little bit cumbersome, but it is actually 6.9938 mills, which is an increase of 0.2812 mills, so we are having to advertise a tax increase. Because if we look at the revenue we generated last year, what is the mills that it would take to generate that same amount of revenue? Because our tax roll has grown, we need less mills now to generate the same revenue for the school district, and that's what this second slide kind of tells you. The actual millage rate for this past year, again, was 7.339. The proposed rate is 7.275. It's actually going down 0.87 percent. Again, the proposed millage is 7.275. The rollback rate is 6.9938, so that is actually 4.2 percent higher than the rollback rate. Now, that will be part of your agenda that's read into the record next Thursday, but this is, I actually pulled up the ad that will be in the paper this weekend, and there is a 3.62 percent. That is what the required local effort piece, that is the only piece that's growing on us. The 0.748, that is your local discretionary mills, has not changed for years now. The 1.5 capital has not changed for years now, so those are not generating, no, actually, those are still generating more revenue, because the tax roll has grown so dramatically. Thank goodness, finally, after the tax roll kept decreasing on us. So, this is actually the ad that will be in the paper. Y'all don't have a copy of this. I'll be happy to share one with you if you would like. But it does specify that here is the property, the, the millage levy for last year. Here's what we're proposing for the new year. Y'all can see dollar-wise, that is an increase. This is tied to our second calc from, our second FEFE calc- calculation from the state of Florida, and again, it does show that we are having a tax increase. So, yes, it is confusing. The millage rate is actually going down, but we are generating more revenue, because the tax roll has gone up, and once again, y'all are at the mercy of the state legislature. You can do nothing to increase or decrease the millage levy that they assess to us. Are there any other questions?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
It's priceless, only in Florida.
That's right. So, although they can go out there and say they don't raise taxes, we have to go out there and take the heat for the increase in the, in the millage rate, while they get to take the credit for not raising taxes, even though they're the ones that raised the millage rate. God, gotta love them. Okay. So, you want to move to, we got to move to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next item. Since we pulled so many, Pam, you're just going to have to tell me what the next one was.
It is.
Okay, purchasing bids. Was John, was that you?
Yes. F-15 is the purchasing bids, and it's, I, I asked this question of senior staff, and, and the response I got was, I didn't think appropriate or, or what I was hoping for. So, I, I pulled it, because specifically, we have three items on here that, once again, are being approved post-contract start, specifically the AMI Kids, Brevard Family Partnership, and the Family Liaison Project. Each of these three are renewals of contracts, but that doesn't matter. The fact is, is that the, we are voting on it now almost twenty-one days after the start date of each of those. And my question was, do we have a tickler file that, that alerts staff to the fact that we have renewals coming? And, and the answer was yes. And the answer that I got, that the reason why this is happening, is because our vendors and our partners don't respond in a timely manner and don't turn in their paperwork on time. Well, that's not the right answer. The right answer, then, is to put language into our existing contracts to make sure that our vendors and our partners do apply. That's, that's standard practice with a government entity. You work on our timeline, we're the ones footing the bill, we're the ones paying out the back door. So, we need to make sure that we hold our, our partners and our, and our, our vendors accountable to that. So, I, I would ask, Dr. Blackburn, that you just take that for action, that, you know, we can do this. We can, we can move things up, we can get things done beforehand, so that we are making votes, timely votes on appropriate matters before they are actually already in place. And that's all. Move to approve.
Okay, motion was made to approve by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Any further discussion? I would just ask, since Mrs. Preston couldn't be here today, could you just have someone send the board a follow-up on how we're going to ensure this doesn't happen again? That would be great. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Is F-18 the next one on the list? Oh, F-15. We just said F-15. That was- That was F-15. Okay, that would be me, then, the transfer of the bus. I just wanted to share what I think is a great partnership we have. So this is not an item I have any concerns about, but I like to share good things that we're doing. And we had a lot of hard items today. So, Arby, would you please share what this item is all about, or-
Absolutely, and good morning.
Feel free to adjust the microphone, or Lieutenant Scully, or whoever wants to share this.
Absolutely. It was several months ago that Lieutenant Scully came forth and said, you know, the sheriff has this really great idea, and he wants to maybe find a school bus out there somewhere that we could convert into sort of a rolling classroom. And so we looked around. I talked to Lieutenant Scully at length about it. And typically, the board has not transferred resources like this to an agency. I mean, we look back, it was probably, I think, Pam, we went back, how many years? Back into the 90s, I think. And found out that we had transferred a bus way back to the Police Athletic League down in Palm Bay, but that was forever ago. But we looked around, we thought, this is a very worthy cause. And so what we said was, you know, we'll do the research, and we'll go forward for you. We identified a resource, and absolutely, we've come up with something. So what I'd like to do is let Lieutenant Scully explain what this bus is going to be used for, and how they're going to employ it in the community.
And Lieutenant Scully and I have decided that the sheriff never sleeps, because he always comes up with ideas.
There is no question about that. Good morning, Dr. Blackburn, welcome. And Mrs. Deasy, thank you. Actually, appreciate the opportunity to speak on this issue, because it does speak volumes about the partnership that Brevard Public Schools has with the Office of the Sheriff. The concept behind the request for the bus really is very simple. When Sheriff Ivy took office in 2012, I guess it was, 2013, one of his signature issues was crime prevention. And quite frankly, when you get right down to the root of our crime prevention efforts, one of the most valuable things that we can do to prevent crime as root cause is keep kids in school. So it really, really kind of dovetails right back to our relationship with Brevard Public Schools. But what the sheriff wants to do is, he asked the district for an old school bus that we could use to promote an educational program to keep, help keep kids in school. And the concept really is very simple. If you look, and Lord knows that we've got a lot of experts in the back of the room that can speak to this much more eloquently than I can, but when we look at kids who drop out of school, we see statistically a much higher rate of incarceration than kids who graduate from school and go on to lead very successful, enriched lives. So what we hope to do is to partner with BPS on a concept where we can provide some education to our kids, and simply lay out the benefits, and the concept is, choose your ride. You can ride in one of our school buses to school every single day, and get an education, and graduate from a Brevard Public School, and be successful and lead an enriched life. Or you can ride in the back of one of our patrol cars, which will lead you straight to jail. And statistically, as a dropout, a high school dropout, that is where you will likely find yourself at some point in your life. And it's just simply a matter of statistics, looking at the numbers. So we hope to share with our students and to the members of our community the importance of staying in school, the importance of focusing on the future, and getting past the hurdles that are facing them at the very moment, and staying in school. So it's something that we're very excited about. We're thrilled that the district was engaged enough to support us in this endeavor, and we look forward to partnering with Brevard Public Schools as we begin to promote this message through our community.
Thank you. So, okay, well, keep us updated on that. I just, we always hear about the bad things going on out there, and I just wanted to promote one of the many good things that we are doing.
As you know, the sheriff, there is no doubt you will see that bus.
Exactly. Okay, so, somebody move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mr. Craig. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion was carried unanimously. Unanimously, ugh, I can't. Unanimously. Okay, next item. F-20 instructional staff recommendations. Who was that? Okay, so you wanted the Affordable Care Act reporting one. I knew that, okay. Okay. Okay.
On F-21, which is our Affordable Care Act reporting, I would like to ask Mr. Langdorff to provide some explanation to us on this issue for a couple of reasons. One, it is another software issue on a day when we have had significant discussion about software. So thank you for piggybacking on that one, Mr. Langdorff. Beyond that, I feel like it's important for us to have a complete understanding of why this is needed, what we look at paying if we don't invest in this software, and why the timeline is so crucial. Typically, this would come for information prior to going to consent, but it's going straight for consent today. And so if you could just kind of provide us with an overview of what has caused the need for this, and why we must move on it at the pace we're moving on it.
Sure, more than happy to do so. First off, I just wanted to say, I came up here early. I apologize. I heard F-18, and I thought I'd jet up here and do as quick as I could. Awful. Anyway.
Funny man.
As far, as far as the Affordable Care Act, as you know, that this was signed into law some six years ago, most of the fines associated with the Affordable Care Act start as of this year, and they will carry out over the next several years, and as long as the act is in place. The first part of the fines that could come from this is when an employer fails to provide their employees with a reasonable cost health insurance plan. The issue, they call it in the industry, pay or play. So you're either going to pay, or you're going to play. And how the government is validating whether an entity is providing an affordable health insurance policy to their employees is to have the employer count all of employees starting in January of 2015 through December of 2015. So they look at all employees, full-time, part-time, interim, any type of employees. And what we're required to do as an employer is to account for every single month of the year for every employee, whether it's full-time or part-time, throughout the entire year. If they meet the definition of a full-time employee that the federal government has placed in, as far as the Affordable Care Act, which is working 30 hours or more per week, we have to provide them with an affordable health insurance plan. The government decides what is affordable as well. That's part of the Affordable Care Act. The issue that we have is we don't have any single source within the district that can go and count all of those employees, and as well as look at the plans that are offered. Generally, what the plan calls, or what the law calls for us to do is to be able to access our human resource information system, our payroll system, our leave of absence system, because a lot of people don't realize when they're on leave of absence, we may not have to provide health insurance, or we might have to. You have to look at your benefits administration system, and many other systems, all at the same time. To be able to do that in-house has been difficult. In fact, most employers in the country are trying to come to grips with how they can do that. I was asked earlier to look at what other districts are doing. Most of them are in a quandary as to how to approach this, because they don't have the ability to do it in-house either. I was asked to talk to the county, and I did communicate with Jerry Visco, and they've had, with the county, and they've had interim meetings already indicating to staff they're going to have to issue the forms that are required. There's two particular forms that must be issued in December. A Form 1094B, I believe, or C, has to be issued to the federal government that accounts for the plan that's been offered to all employees each month of the year. Then in January 31st, the entity has to issue a form similar to a W-2 form, called the 1094C, that outlines for the employee what plan was offered to them from January through December, at what cost, did it provide coverage for each one of their dependents, all of those things, including an estimate of what the out-of-pocket expenses might be for them. It's a very complicated formula. In fact, the federal government didn't issue the guidance and tell employers what they have to do for this plan until March of this year. At that time, employers that were not going to comply for 2015, effective 2016, the fine for failing to do that was $100 per employee, whether full or part-time or interim, with a $1.5 million cap. On June 29th, President Obama assigned a presidential order increasing that fine to $250 per employee with a $3 million cap. For employers who are making no attempt to provide this type of information to the Internal Revenue Service, which is the entity that's in charge of verifying this and issuing those fines, which will come sometime in the March-April timeframe, for those who don't comply, the fine will be $500 per employee with no cap. So that's just for the count. This year, we have to substantially, we have to provide a health insurance plan for 70% of our employees, substantially all of our full-time employees, at 70%. Failure to do that would necessitate an additional $2,000 fine for all of those employees not offered an affordable plan. Next year, that jumps to 95%. So it's critical, in other words, we have to offer 95% of all of those who are subject, or should have been offered a plan, we have to be able to account for 95% of staff. It's a very complicated system. The IRS has not even developed how the electronic reporting requirement, which is required for their component, is going to be developed. They haven't even developed or told employers how that's going to be done. We're hoping that we have that guidance sometime soon. But it is the federal government, so those are the issues we're faced with. Initially, there were some discussions within the benefit department before I took over on what we're going to do, and essentially, each one of the different departments that we're communicated with, our finance department, our benefit department, they indicated that they did not have the ability to meet this mandate. After I took over 20 days ago, which was a nice welcome to come to this, I had similar conversations with those involved, and they reiterated the same, that they do not have the ability to meet this mandate. The problem is, most employers don't have that ability either. And there's few vendors willing to take that on themselves to choose from, but there are a few that will take your information. So they'll take, through a secure file server, our information from our benefit system, from our payroll, from our leave system, from our third-party administrative systems. They'll meld that together and issue those reports for each month for the federal government, and respond on that form. And they will issue a report to the employee come January 31st, which is the requirement. So we, as employees, can submit that with our W-2 forms during the tax time. That's what's happening this year. It's a looking back as well as looking forward. It's very complicated. And that's why I'm here with this. To give you an idea of what I did when I was advised that I was, or when I was asked to look at taking on this new position, which I'm very glad to do, I communicated with our purchasing department, and I asked Mr. Parker and his staff if he would issue an RFP. Once I asked Chris, or it's who, Chris from Willis is actually the one that brought that to me, saying, "Mark, we've got to do something on this, because the fine potential is great." So I was very grateful to have Willis to present that to us. But Chris and his staff developed the specifications, and we issued an RFP. The first round of RFP issues, we got one response. That particular vendor did not meet the specifications that we were looking for. So we issued a second RFP. We got one response on that, and they could meet part of the requirement, but not the full requirement. So we didn't really have a vendor to choose from after going out twice for RFP. And Mr. Parker and his staff suggested that we communicate with any vendor we could and provide those services, or get those services. And that's exactly what we did. With the help of Willis, I communicated with several different vendors, and you have a choice of three there. And the one that I'm recommending is the best price. But what's nice about this particular vendor, which is Equifax, is they're the ones that helped the Department of Health and Human Services find the reporting process. So if there is a company that can help us pull all of these together, I really think Equifax is the best one, and they're also the best price. So that's why you have this contract in front of you. The caveat to this, and I've heard this from not just Equifax and Health Effects, who's the next, but from three others last week when I attended a seminar in relation to these issues, that most of them are terminating any new business as of July 31st, because there's that many businesses that are signing clients, and they're afraid if they sign any more, they won't be able to meet their obligations to those companies. So that's why you have this here today, so you can vote on it. And frankly, I'm hoping you will vote on it, so that we can meet this mandate in order to avoid those fines. And that's, in essence, what we're doing today.
And so just for clarification, this is not something that our ERP software would be able to take care of, correct? This is well beyond the scope of anything associated with that. This is not an expense that we are incurring because we don't have the functional ERP software. It's completely separate.
It's completely separate. Completely.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Just, thank you for delving into that, because, you know, I asked you to go and look at the other districts, and I know this is affecting small companies, large companies across the country. My one question, though, that I forgot to ask is, what happens if the law changes? What, where, I don't see the actual contract language that says, hey, if reporting requirements change, and/or the Affordable Care Act changes significantly, are we, will this contract then need to be modified? Or is there provisions in it that allow us to not have to pay more, or do we have to renegotiate?
The price will be the same. The contract, Equifax, said they will meet every mandate that may change between now and the end of the year, or the next few years. What's really nice about this particular contract is, they will be, they'll have our backs, so to speak, if there's any audits, or any issues that arises from this, for four years, for each year of the contract. So if the IRS comes in and wants to audit the school board of Brevard County with regards to our health insurance plan, they will be with us, and that's included in the cost of the contract. So they will meet every mandate.
And what happens if, by chance, Congress suspends reporting requirements? You know, we're coming up to a presidential election. There's a very good chance that things may change just for that reason. Is there provision to us to recoup some of that, or?
I think there is a termination clause. Chris, can you remember what the termination clause is? You know, I have the contract, but I did not read that. Most of our contracts do have a termination clause within them, and we will make sure that is a part of this contract today.
Okay, I would assume it's in there. I just didn't see it, so I appreciate that.
Sure. That is true. The key here for this year is, we do have the measurement period that we have to do this particular year. So even if they change it substantially next year, frankly, I don't anticipate they're going to change anything until the presidential election, so we've got a couple of years to go before that. And then Congress would have to meet. This is a three-year contract, so chances are, before they make a substantial change, we're going to be into the next administration and beyond.
As everybody knows, I'm usually very outspoken about these topics, and critical of various things, including our consultant, but I wanted to give some credit where credit is due. As I understand it, our consultant, Willis, did bring this to the district's attention prior to you finding out about it, and action hadn't been taken on it. So thank you for looking out for us, as is appropriate. And I'm glad that, Mr. Langdorff, that you've got eyes on this now that we've aligned benefits under risk management. I'm not sure you're liking me too much for that right now, though.
No, I'm very grateful for the opportunity.
You have lots of that. Yeah. You'll have lots more opportunities, yes. Okay. Move to approve?
To approve?
Second. Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mrs.
Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Further discussion? Please vote. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Next up.
F-26 or F-25?
Well, I'm trying really hard to keep you guys on your toes today. You see, I went through and made all my notes last night on what I was pulling, and then all the agenda items changed. So although initially it was identified as F-25 because of the additions to the agenda, it's now F-26, which is our after-school fees.
Okay.
Just trying to have some fun on a rough day, you know? So I pulled this particular item because I had the opportunity to have some extensive conversation around this issue prior to this coming to the board, because I had had some teachers who had reached out to me as well with concerns about additional costs for teachers as a result of the early release Wednesdays. And so I was very pleased to see that this was coming up for the public's information. I do have a couple of questions on it just for verification more than anything, and that is, I just want to make sure that there's no increase for families that are already using aftercare for that additional hour. And then I had a question on, what if families only need that one hour on Wednesday? So maybe their schedule is set so that they're able to get there and pick their children up at 2:30, but because they have to be picked up at 1:30, they need an hour. Is there an option for that?
Ms. Belford, let me introduce Debbie Embry, and she is our district coordinator for childcare, and she has all the answers.
Ms. Belford, you're exactly right. There is no increase to fees for all children who are enrolled in a regular weekly course. They're just going to have the extended time on Wednesdays. So there is no fee increase to any of our regular rates. We have added two options. Last year, one of the requests we were getting from the community was about, I don't need it a lot, I need it occasionally, $25 for the daily drop-in is a little high, could you work a package? And we worked that package early on in the year while it was still 15 early-release days last year, and we came up with the $250, which really reduced the daily rate from 25 down to $15. Oh, I'm sorry, $16.67. When the early-release days extended to 40 days, we came up with an annual pass of $40, uh, $600 for the 40 days, bringing it down again to $15 a day. We do not have an hourly rate. What we have to consider in that is, we have to hire staff accordingly, and our minimum amount of time we can hire staff is really four hours a day. So to offer a new option for only an hour and have to pay staff four hours to accommodate that group may not be an effective use of money.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else?
Any other questions?
I just would say that they've worked very hard to bring in our costs for school-age childcare, because at times, there was some, we were paying for losses. And so, you know, they really do know what they're talking about, and they go through this with a fine-tooth comb every few months. I'm on that committee to see what's going on. Thank you, Ms. Nisi, for nominating me for that, because I asked childcare questions years ago. That's where I got. But, you know, they work very hard to keep the costs low, to keep the quality high, and I really appreciate you coming up with these options. We did talk about it a few months ago, what are we going to do? So I think this is a good way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve? Second.
Okay, motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Did that hit every item, Pam?
I think it did.
I think you get the records. Okay, Misty.
So this item was originally identified as F-27, but it's F-28, project management, and I really have a question for staff somewhat related to the discussion on this item more than the item itself. And that is, in the discussion, there was verbiage that indicated that the change had been reported to the ICOC. And so my question comes up with relation to the interaction with the ICOC with staff as well as the board, and that is, if we are making decisions and reporting things to the ICOC as opposed to asking for input or direction from the ICOC, which is the way it's set up, I'm not saying we're doing anything wrong there, but as things are reported to the ICOC, should they have concerns, how do they address those concerns? So when this item went to them and you said, "This is something that we had to do, and this is the reason that we had to do it," if it did not sit well with them for whatever reason, how would they go about communicating those concerns? And then the second part of that question is, when will the board hear from the ICOC on how things are progressing, which would ultimately result in the public hearing from them as well?
Yes, ma'am. Two things. We haven't had that circumstance yet, but we've planned for it, so depending upon what the issue is, we would either report to the board, like as part of this agenda item, for example, if the ICOC had a concern regarding this item, we would have disclosed that in the agenda report to the board. So we want to be transparent as well. As to the ICOC's report to the board, we are going to talk about that at their August meeting, and then we would anticipate that they would develop their report to the board and essentially approve it as the ICOC at their October meeting, so it would follow the third week in October. So I'm guessing sometime in November would be the report to the ICOC. We want to make sure that the fiscal year has been closed out before they provide their report to you.
And in the interim, in between those official reports to the board, if there were concerns from ICOC members, are they encouraged to reach out to staff, to board members, to, how do they handle that?
Yes, ma'am. They certainly can reach out to staff or to board members at their discretion individually. As a group, if there were any actions taken by the ICOC that they wanted the board to be aware of, we would certainly report them to you.
Wonderful, thank you. I just really wanted to make sure that we had an understanding of how that process worked, so I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Beislin, I'm concerned that the consent agenda with the items pulled do not match the items that, so what I would like to do, just to make sure everything's covered, is just approve the entire consent agenda at this point in time to make sure we did approve everything, because I'm not feeling like that we really did.
Numbers don't seem to add up.
Yeah.
Right, and I think that's a good point. I think that'd be a good motion to be made.
Okay. So I would like to ask the board, now that we've gone through these and numbers didn't match, if someone would make a motion to now approve the entire consent agenda?
Move to approve the entire consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion, okay. Motion was made by Mr. Ziegler to improve the entire consent agenda, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I just, I was feeling a little uncomfortable with all the numbers. Thank you, Mrs. Belford. Okay, you're just keeping me on my toes. So we've already had our break, and so there are no action items, so let's go into the information agenda. The information agenda includes items for board review, and will be brought back for action at the subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items today. Dr. Blackburn?
There are two items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss anything on the information agenda? I'm looking at you, Mr. Ziegler, because sometimes the insurance staff.
No, I had asked, sent some questions to staff that I did not need answers on by right now, so I do not plan on discussing it at this point in time.
Surprise. What about other board members? Okay, are there any additional staff reports? Dr. Blackburn?
There are not.
Okay. Before we get into board member reports, we have one discussion point that we need to clarify, and we need to discuss FSBA, we need, whether we're going to move forward with renewal of our membership, and if we do, Mrs. Henderson has asked to continue on as our legislative member. God bless you on that one.
They changed, FSBA changed the timeframe when the committees need their appointments. So they changed the legislative for June, so that we're working with the full year. Right now, it's like November, like we always do it in November. And so this gives us more continuity, and so I would like to stay on and finish this off, because we are coming up with our legislative priorities, and they need somebody on there. And so I would ask that if we're going to do this, I really need, I would like to stay.
Okay. So before we do that, I just need the majority to agree that we're going to continue.
Agreed, and I'm fine with Mrs. Henderson continuing. She's doing a good job.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, so go on ahead and pay that invoice and send in that paperwork. Okay, so we're at board members.
Thank you.
While we're on that topic, Mrs. Nisi.
Nope, sorry, we moved on.
We should have, I'll just keep talking, oh, no. We, I would like to have some conversation about master board training. Master board, we did that in, when did we do that, 2010? Nine or 10?
What I would like to do before you, I'm going to interrupt you on that one, is I would like to have, we talked about having a superintendent board retreat, and I would like to do that before any option of master board, because my last experience with master board is, I've had two experiences with it. One was very poor, and one was okay, and I guess I would like to do a board superintendent retreat before we do anything with master board.
We can bring it up at that time, but I want to make sure we have that conversation.
Okay. So, board member reports. I'm going to start down here with Misty.
I think I've messed things up enough today, so I don't, you know, it certainly has been a busy summer. I am thrilled to have Dr. Blackburn on the team and moving forward, and lots of positive things coming down the pike. I don't have anything specific as far as board report. I was in DC a couple of weeks ago and thought seriously about stopping by and to have a chat with Arnie Duncan, but decided that that probably would not be in the district's best interest, so I kept moving.
Okay, Mr. Ziegler?
No report.
Okay. Would I go to the next two, because I hate putting staff members on the spot, but Mr. Theodore, while I go to the next two board members, would you mind coming up and helping me when I, I'm going to end online, just kind of sharing what happened at our county commission meeting? I'm going to go to the next two board members, but just kind of share with how well we did last week. So just give you a minute to get your thoughts together. Mrs. Henderson?
I have no report, but welcome aboard.
Mr. Craig?
No, I don't really have a, first of all, welcome, Dr. Blackburn. It is wonderful to have you here, and I look forward to a long and fruitful relationship, both for my children, most of all. So thank you for being here and for taking on this challenge. We've got a lot to take care of, and I know you're up to the task. A couple, just two items that I, actually, one item that I want to bring up, and it has to do with this. There is, certainly, Dr. Blackburn has been overwhelmed by education articles in the Florida Today, which is good. Our new reporter is putting the spotlight on our school system in a variety of ways, and I think that's fantastic. One of the issues is the impact fees and the genesis behind that, and why we're even discussing that. And that is the school situation in the middle of the county. Back in March, when this was first brought up at a workshop, I asked then that we don't start moving down a road knowing that we're going to have a new superintendent here that needs to take a look at this from a big picture and totally understand where we're at, and not only that, but understand all the options that are on the table. And if we all remember, one of the questions that we asked each of the individual superintendent candidates during the public comment or public interview questions was specifically about the concept of either opening or closing or redistricting and the impact that that has on the community. And to a T, I think everyone agreed that, and answered with, the community needs to be involved. Well, so far, they haven't in this, and so I will ask you to take a hard look at exactly where we are and what the situation has, why we're even, why this has been brought to the commission, and then to tell us how you envision us, including the community, in this decision about whether or not new schools are actually needed. We need to have that open discussion about what all the options are, the costs associated with that, the return on investment of a new facility, of ICE, either repurposing or putting portables, or whatever the other options are on the table. All that needs to be out there before we make any decisions or vote on anything that would, that allocate funding to build new schools. So I know that's a big challenge, but it's one that's near to the table, because it's already out there and it's already being discussed at the commission level.
Okay. I would, in terms of my report, the first thing I would like to do is, I would like to thank Dr. Pace, who served as acting superintendent. She stepped in, she had a very short vacation, and even while she was on vacation, she was in contact with me. And then she got served with jury duty during this time, and even during all the things that had to take place, she was in constant contact with me, you were in contact with me, and I can't thank her enough for keeping me sane during these times waiting for you to get here. So I just want to say thank you, Dr. Pace. We had a, we had a very trying last two to three weeks, but we can honestly say that we did survive. So we got through this, and I just want to thank you very much. Thank you very much for staff, and like all the rest of them say, I know I can't say it enough, I am so glad you are here. My family is so glad that you are here. So anyway, looking forward to going forward, and one of the things that took place while you were getting prepared to come here were the impact fees. And so, Dane, you are just much better versed than I am to explain what happened last week, but one of the duties I served last week was to appear before the county commission workshop, and Dane, would you just very briefly explain what happened and where it goes from here?
Certainly.
Because I would love to talk about something besides software.
Well, I think I can answer Mr. Craig's question partially, and then give a background on why we were even there. As you know, we've been using our impact fees to pay debt for the last three or four years, because it was necessary to do so. We didn't have money, we barely had money to pay the debt, and we were using that to allow us to buy a few buses and a few computers and maintain our facilities at a minimal level. Well, we, in the meantime, we were, as a district, growing in the central and south areas. Options are pulling in portables, rezoning, building additions before you build a new school. So those are some of the options, Mr. Craig, that you can do before you build a new school. At some point, pulling in portables stresses the core capacity. You start feeding lunch at 10 o'clock and feeding until 2:00. So those core, the ratio of portables to core capacity is a real restriction. I believe that we're there in the south area. We have an enormous number of portables around those schools in the west Melbourne, the north part of, we call the south area. So I believe that either additions, replacing those portables is an option, but that just keeps that ratio of extra classrooms to core capacity at the level it is now. You can do that. I don't think that solves the problem, because we're showing an enormous amount of upcoming growth in that west Melbourne area, as we do in the Viera area. We're a little more fortunate in the Viera area, because we don't have nearly as many portables there, and we have some opportunity to rezone. I don't believe that there's really any opportunity to rezone down in the south area, except for a little tweak possibly to, the tweak isn't the right word, a small redistricting at the south part of the Melbourne intermediate boundary that would help relieve that. We have some schools with capacity down around that south area, south part of that boundary. So that's a small possibility. Viera, there is a slight possibility. We don't have as many portables in Viera, so that we can delay our need to do anything by bringing in portables until we get to that ratio where we're stressing the core capacity. The north area, I think, is stable, and we have facilities there that we've recently closed that we could open up again, so I'm sure we're okay there. As we, Dr. Bingley's vision was to build new schools as opposed to additions, and in support of that vision, he contemplated a six-year cap- a six-year capital plan that used the impact fees to supplement some of our savings currently, and use of some of the ad valorem monies to build those schools in a timely fashion, three years down at West Melbourne, and six years, five to six years at Viera. To do that, it was necessary to aggregate all of the fees that we collect throughout the county, which is not possible with four impact fee districts. So, at the workshop that Dr. Bingley presented his vision, I said, "I would like your permission to ask the county commission to contemplate reducing those impact fees down to one benefit district, to give us the flexibility that we needed." The impact fee advisory committees objected to that. They felt that there needed to be some definition of area in which the impact fees were collected, but were more than willing to help us. And remember that the impact fee committees have a representative from every local government. So, we had all 16 local governments on that committee, representatives from. As a committee, they voted for an option to allow us, or they recommended basically to you and to the county commission, that two districts were appropriate, the north and the south. And to help us, they also recommended a slight increase in the impact fees to allow us to collect what we now collect throughout the county in the south area. We collect about 75% or 76% of our fees in the south area. So, there was a slight increase, up to about $5,800 in the single-family homes from '44, '45, to make that offset. They were, they, as advisory committees, representatives of the local governments, were trying to work with us and help us. It was a very collaborative effort. At the county commission, and Mrs. Neese and I attended that workshop, after some debate, I believe that the county commission understood our dilemma. They grasped Mrs. Neese's concept of giving us additional flexibility, and they gave some weight to the recommendation of the impact fee committee, advisory committee members, representatives of the local governments, and voted to direct staff to put together an ordinance that reduced the impact fee districts from four to two, and increased it not by the amount that we had proposed or the impact fee committees had proposed, but as a percentage of the consultant's new fee schedule, which in this case was 50%.
Well, this was actually your suggestion, and I thought it was an excellent, yeah, I could say, Dane, you're not giving yourself enough credit, because when we went into this, they weren't going to make any changes to the fee schedule. It would have been the original schedule from 2004 with no changes. And I could say, Dane, you need to give yourself credit for this. And so, he suggested that, "Let's look at what the consultants recommend," because you should always, it needs to be something defensible. And the consultants were recommending, you know, $10,000, this huge, which wasn't going to fly at all. So, Dane said, "Let's look at what the consultants recommend and do 50%." And with those numbers, that gives us a slight increase on the single-family, which is really the ones that generate the kids and is our biggest growth, but it gives a very nice decrease in mobile homes and multifamily.
Correct.
And that also was something that the county commissioners liked hearing, because those were also, a lot of times, our lower-income families. And although you don't tie the two together, they were concerned about lower-income areas being hit with higher impact fees. And so, what was nice was to be able to have significant decreases in those two areas. And you probably can, do you have the exact numbers?
I do not. I have a percent, I can approximate them. The single-family, which represents about 90% to 92% of the actual transactions on impact fees, went up about $680, or the recommendation is to put it up to about $680, to about $10,000, I'm sorry, from '44, '45 to $5,5,096.
Yeah, almost $5,100.
Yeah, about a 14% increase. The multifamily apartments basically went down by about 30% from $2,700 to $23,000 or $400, 20, or it went into the high teens, I believe. And the mobile family went down by 50% from about $2,600 to about $1,300. So, that, I think the county commission recognized it would help those lower-priced dwellings as a percentage, the impact fees, a percentage of the cost of those dwellings. And I believe they were trying to work with the school board to give us some increase. More importantly, they have now a rationale on how they set those impact fees as a percentage of the latest study. So, I think that helped them, too.
Yeah. So, it was really a win-win. And as I said, Dane gives himself no credit. It was, it was really a win-win, and it would not have happened without Dane being there, and how he tied it to the consultant's report. And like most things over at the county commission, it was for one. But, but the four county commissioners, they understood. They understood the importance of the impact fees, and I feel fairly confident as of today, when it comes up for a vote at their next meeting, I feel very confident that it will continue forward. But, he did an excellent job, and I just want to make sure that he will not give himself credit for it, but he needed to be recognized today for what he brought forward, or there would have been no changes to those impact fees. So,
Thank you.
I just wanted the explanation, but also to say, thank you for getting even that little increase through, because a little increase over a long period of time, I think, will make a big difference. So, any questions?
I just want to reiterate, there's no doubt that, and I know the reason why he did it. I just want to make sure, though, that we understand that impact fees are not just for new construction. That is not, that shouldn't even be on the table. The reason why we're doing it is because of the impact to the school system, not because we have to go out and build a brand-new school. That has not been determined yet. And I want the, I just want to make sure that that is understood, that we are going to do a full thorough analysis. We close schools without being very transparent. We're certainly not going to open them without being very transparent. That means putting paper to pencil and showing the public exactly what the costs are of all the separate options, which is what we discussed at the March workshop. So, thanks.
Absolutely. I just wanted to, that happened so quickly last week, and Dr. Blackburn wasn't here yet. I just wanted to make sure that you are all aware of what happened last week and the changes and so forth. Thank you, Mr. Theodore. Okay, so, that was the end of mine. So, Dr. Blackburn, welcome to your first school board meeting. We're now to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Neese, and board members in the community. While I don't have much of a report today, something tells me in subsequent meetings, I will have much to report on. And part of that is going to be the support and the assistance from everyone that can hear my voice right now. I'm going to need as many people as possible to speak to me and to inform me on your take on where Brevard is now, where we've been, and more importantly, where we want to be in the future. So, wherever you see me, schools, functions, activities, publics, wherever we run into each other, please, just fill my mind with your thoughts and your expressions and your commitment to contribute to solutions. So, thank you again.
Okay. Is there any more business to come before the board? We are adjourned. Now, remember, we have Pam that's been brought in for us.